...should care, watch only on RT.com.
Does the media lead us or we lead the media? Privacy versus security. Alright, your party, uh, where's it going? The questions that no one is asking with the guests that you deserve answers from. It's all on politicking, only on RT.
We are not talking the language of war, but I will only react to situations.
I have read the reports, but I'm not in a position to...
No, I will leave that to the State Department to comment on your latter point.
I don't want to say that yet.
Hey, Mr. Carey, do you have any comments on the document?
No, I don't.
No comment?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so.
Thank you.
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I get your attention? Good morning. I will request everybody to stand up as the chairperson of the NCOP, the premier of Houghton,
From the Book of Numbers, Chapter Six. A God-given Priestly-Breathed Blessing. A prayer that calls upon God's supernal attribute of kindness, that it may reach us in a very physical and tangible manner. First in Hebrew and then in English. Yebarecha Adonai vi yishmirecha. Ya'air Adonai pana velacha vi chonecha. Issa Adonai pana velacha vi asem lacha shalom. May God bless you and safeguard you. May God shine His countenance upon you and be gracious to you. May God turn His countenance towards you and grant you peace. Amen. Thank you very much. You may get seated. Raco Palakadulama Fatsi. My name is Uhuru Muyilwa. I'm the Deputy Speaker of the Hauteam Provincial Legislature. I am working this morning with the Deputy Chairperson of the National Council of Provinces, Honorable Tandi Memela. I would then take this opportunity to request the Tsorannang Tsonga Cultural Group to take the stage as I invite the Honorable Chairperson of the National Council of Provinces to ascend the stage. Thank you very much. Tsorannang Tsonga Cultural Group, is it here? Can I get an indication as to where the Tsorannang Tsonga Cultural Group is here? Okay, you can come and run the item. Thank you very much.
Ay banana buya buya wanga buya banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya wanga buya banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya ikubuya le banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana le kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana buya buya wanga buya banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana. Banana kaya kaya inase kutiwati banana. Buya buya wanga buya banana.
Ralebocha, sabona. Thank you very much. Erere le chibisha ore. Le khotala National Council of Provinces. Kele khotala lele mechegu. Badu libas South Africa kamukaan. Lidi cho sabona. Biala mamutlamulutakupela ore. Arre bolele kama leme arre ukixichanga buti. Leska nyaka bolelas kuakawo le wonaki bolelas kuwa. Re nyaka ole lokula kamukaan kamukaan alina. Mamutlale ore, le bolelesitokua kamukho les bolelan kahon. Baba bolelan sizzulu, baba bolelesizulu. Abakulme sindebale, bakulme sindebale. Ngali ntilenjalusabule. I'm now taking this opportunity to raise the National Council of Provinces, Umam Tandi Memela, to direct this program. Thank you very much. Chairperson.
Dumelang. Sanibona. Ninjiani. Aina mingapila. Sjobliaka kulu kugutinamshanzwe. Sizobanani la. Ukuzini sijale zonke izinten funukutela zona ezenzeka ekhlali ngwino. Kotanjwe ngamanjwe. Gizotela ukparamisa. Eh. I nearly said my son. Speaker of the city of Swane, Metropolitan Municipality, Councillor Masupse. Bakayetu Dumelang. Erere kisimulaka khudumedisa ketapili ya rona siente. Kerere kisimulaka khure Chairperson ya NCOPE, Honorable Masangu. Lee, the Members at NCOPE, a National Assembly. Kerakape kere mewarona, willing Premier ya Hauteam, Honorable Mukonyani, lead Members at Sotle, Ta Hauteam Legislature. Kidumedisa kape Councillor Paxtawu, willing Executive Mayor wa Johannesburg, me utleka cheno kape kaune iliche person ya Salga Provincial Committee. Kidumedisa kape mewarona willing Speaker wa Legislature, Honorable Maseko. Kidumedisa kape Executive Mayor wa Maspala wa rona mutumukolo wa Swane, Councillor Ramukupa, Limited Spoodla kere. Aha. Kerakape kere kidumedisa baingbarona bobote, baba twankonationali, baba twank all over South Africa, baba nanle rona kachenu, mesu kolo sitona kidumedisa rona ba tadi barona. Ba mo city of Swane, Dumelang. Abu Sheen. Tobell. Locharani. Huiye more. Good morning. Litu kilaba kayetu. Recopani ya nakachenu, mo moten sitoropo wa Swane omukolo, ele kore renalitumelo ya kore puso, kipuso ya batu kabatu. Kakori ya loketapili ya rona ya konationali ya province, ba kilemo, ele kore bakofa luna ba ari ba Swane. Chono lese bakasa kore libuisanelebona kaditirelo, ze le kore puso idikisa molona le limba ari kanakutetutl. Bakame banale rona, kusimulaka cheno kufiklaka Afrika, kamo ele kore Presidento tla banale rona also on Friday. Marasere sekopa molona ke kore lidirese chono esiente, kore libuisanelebona. Akiru kona lete rekodi lebochan Suel, ze lo regamente ya idikisa morona. Kona lete dinkape ze lo kore disinte ditlala, mo hongavemente mo isale, mo hongritalemo san, siente, re lese chava leketapil. Akama fukua kira na amanzi, hayse kore recopa kore beke, e wote kusimulaka cheno kufiklaka Afrika, aline nzelita. Kese bakasa rona le lese chava kore liko libuisana leketapili ya rona, e wote laba bona ba tilibu wote kere. So retsepa ilu kore litanana nzelileting libuisana le luna, libuisana lebona. Mu di mutlo re sekufaza kore diroya rona, itzama esiente kufiklaka Afrika, kaba rutiba rona ba re rappel lete, getsepa litanana timbo wote, kama fukua auki re la mu hetwi, mo city of Swane, the city that ignites excellence. Kialabo. Ralebocha. I'll now call upon the Mayor of the city of Swane, Honorable Ramakupa.
Kialabo. Okay. Eh, kialabo amu. Kialabo amu Tsoramarapo. Eh, ma Memela, ibile ilimo tajamo dula strulo, wa National Council of Province. Eva honom pasiva kaseore le rena. Riti semanjwa kawi kokovejo le tompo, aditumedisa le la radro. Mo le harro le lava du diwadi milioni je taro, we amuti kolo are na, eh, in the city of Swane. Ki buela apape, ki semanjwa tompo, umudula strulo, wa NCOPE, Honorable Masangu. Apape, ki lebuwe ori, osisiya rena, ibile ilin, tunakolo ya province ya odifitra kamuka, mo Africa burua. Me nomvula Mukonyani re realabo, ilu honu wa le rena nas. Ri wela apari, ri semanjwa tompo, umudula strulo wa Salga, Salga ilu wa namohato wa, di toropo kamuka mo haudrin. Ilin meyara, wa mutwa Johannesburg Councillor Daw. Aginyagur toropi kulu garu le mo Swane, agirirna wolu re, toya tahtari re kakuan te. Eh, yes, toropi ilimuri, it's in the south of Swane, yes, it's an important reference. You must see. Eh, the Speaker, si buledi sa Hauteam Legislature, osisi lindi we Maseko. Maloko kamuka NCOPE ba ilu re nas, wa no re na ofitaga lavotano, realabo aile tilika hai. Members, ba Hauteam Legislature le bona ba hona, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, comrades and friends, Dumelang, good morning, huiye more, Dimaceloni, Botani, Abu Seeni, Mangwanani. It is with an immense honor to have the distinct privilege of addressing you this morning on the occasion of the special sitting of the National Council of Provinces officially dubbed Taking Parliament to the People. Ore kanetiratale wa orumusuwa rena, le ba truva ilu ba heti, ilu ba reme, le ba truva ilu ba thama motsewa re na mona in Africa burua, nas wa no re na in the city of Swane. Woncha ore, oyakamu homula otsewa re na, robocha okao, naore kame talima jaji, muso awatu, katratu ya batu. O Swane jo buledi sanale batu, robo tokwa lewa na ba honu tamoba, buledi sanale re na realabo. The privilege of memorality dictates that from time to time we are called upon to receive and welcome guests to our shores on behalf of the people we represent, the citizens of the metropolitan city of Swane. In their glorious names, on name and on their behalf, we wish to extend a warm welcome to you, the ultimate representative of our people to our city, the capital city of the Republic. Re realabo, ilu honu fitagahi, dimpya dibofilo. Ele wana mpia egan dele tzebo ra enamenwe, gasa le tsweni, lena ilu ore ba leka hai. We would like to sincerely thank you and your colleagues for making public participation a permanent feature of our democratic way of life through the Taking Parliament to the People initiative since 2002. In so doing, you are not only honoring your constitutional obligations, but most importantly, you are assuming a leading role in consolidating the foundations of our democracy. Orumusho katratu ya batu, kavunchu ya batu, tllo udi shiwa. Gali tla moba tunli, buledi sanale wa na lo honu tiyele jadi loja bona, me wono ya bona ore, ke insere kasi diria ukhontisha ore, ribusheli tsa siritimo, se chavi nsa ore. We are thus intaminably indebted to the NCOPE for remaining single-minded in the observation of your supreme obligation to our people and their aspirations. Your presence here today is a living testament of your stubborn dedication to the task of ossifying the foundation of a democratic and open society based on the will of the people. Ore tatu ya batu, lidinya okajawa na. Tllo hona ojue di shapili, gare tla moba tunkame talima jadi ba tiyeleja, ukhontisha, orishumisha na le bona, uki shatso solu usho moschavi nsa ba tuba ore. Your presence here today is a devastating critique to the views of the American political ex-scientist Michael Parenti, who in his critique of Western representative forms of democracy comes to a conclusion that there can be nothing more than democracy for the few. What the political scientists had in mind, has in mind, is a sort of democratic system wherein citizens are restricted to a passive casting of a ballot once every five years and then retreat into often indifferent spectators as the responsibility of rulership is outsourced to those elected. Fortunately, ours falls outside the ambit of the stereotype, of the typologies disparaged by Parenti in that it is defined by multiple points of entry through which our citizens can enter the realm of rulership to shape and determine their own destiny. Ore ba tuba wana ba re ba heti le ma loba, ababushiba iti, babusha le re nas saba. Ore abar opo le kala jadi le reali khetu, ba tla ore ete lakame talima jaji, ukhontisha dinya, okajara na di hona ojue di shapili, ore honu ra rola matata se chava saba tuba ore. Your work as the NCOPE, including this kind of initiative, deal a massive blow to this conception by bridging the dichotomous gap between representative and participatory aspects of our democratic way of life. Our constitution makes it clear that all spheres of government, national, provincial and local, are founded on principles of cooperative governance in terms of which all are both severally and collectively and joined to provide effective, transparent, accountable and coherent government to the republic. Ore, mafapama ra ro kamuka musho, musho amuti, wabuga arre musho a province, musho amuti silehai. Wa kagishiwa momula otsewa re na, ore ba Swane jo ushumisha na ukhontisha ore, ritlisada tsebele jo moba tumbawo re na, je ilimuri, kanetiri hona wika rabe la kachona, kanetiri ya hona oboncha, re gare mafapama ra ru, re shuma re le mogo, ukhontisha, orerarula matata ba tuba ore. This should therefore, once and for all, settle the debate since hours unlike so-called mature democracies elsewhere in the world. Is firmly grounded on the understanding that the people shall govern means exactly that and nothing more or less. The ongoing interactions between institutions of parliament and the people is our single most important contribution to the conceptual and practical meaning of democracy as an evolving system of governance and a way of life. Director of Ceremonies, in this respect, would like to congratulate the leadership and the entire membership of the NCOPE for staying true to the spirit and letter of our democratic governance injunctions as provided for in the supreme law of our land, the Constitution. Re reala lebooga, matongo, kamatongo, kawi kokovejo ore, le honu ukhontisha, orisomula otsewa re na, osenyaka movee tapili biare nasiyadirega ore, le tla moba tunkota gubuledi sanale bona. For this edition of Taking Parliament to the People, you have preferred to draw our attention to the burning priorities of the day through the theme "Working Together for Social-Economic Development." We consider this an invitation for critical dialogue with our people in view of the stark realities staring us in the face. At various conceptual and policy stances, we have analyzed this reality using the notion of triple challenges with reference to pesimshomo, libuhuma, tisha ore, democracy area paoka ona, musho awatu katratu, the objectionable attribute of ranking amongst the most, if not the most, towards realizing the Millennium Development Goals. That critical question, that in spite of people whose tale is narrated by the statistics conversely, why does there seem to be a degree of incongruence between the measures we put in place and the actual outcomes on the ground? To raise these critical questions is not tantamount to capitulating to those cynical about the progress we have made as a democratic movement in the country. We are fully aware that in the crucible of the attendant challenges of reconstruction and development, the estuar enemies of the people are frantically portraying themselves as the friends of the people. That is a contest we have no interest in, since our strategic mission dictates that we galvanize all our energies to solidify our democracy, to make possible expanding material benefits of our people, to make sure that their lives move forward and guarantee, and to guarantee the future of our children. Ore gare ya pele, re atsepa ore, kama rama mingwa kaima sume pedi, kama rama ore kete musho katatu ya batu. Tllo ukhontisha, orerarula matata tla la, matata buhuma, matata otloka ya gami shomo. Ore atsepa, or mushomo isalo mo ulu ore, re kara rola matata, efela musho arre na oloru heti le ma loba, kan 1994. Udira kamuka kamukho Swane je wo, ukhontishisha ore, orerarula matata ba tuba ore na, ore kanetiri bona rukona obafasri. As we conclude Director of Ceremonies, from us as local government in general and the city of Swane in particular, we stand ready to continue to play our role in making the system of cooperative government functional to the needs of our evolving democracy. Here in the city of Swane, we have committed ourselves to a long-term strategic vision statement, the Swane Vision 2055, through which, amongst others, we aspire to see a city that is livable, resilient and inclusive. Over and above that, we have set out to cultivate the virtues of fine traditions of excellence as defining attributes of our journey to that cherished ideal. Ore renalweta pele biya Swane, rishumisha na le ma lokuwa saba, mo toropo ya re na ekolo ya Swane. Re jere sepeto sa ore, tllo ukhontisha ore, kat 2055, reaga toropo ya bore na ilimuri, bunchi biare na, tllo wa motogloka yona, tllo wa refediste buhuma ne, tllo wa ukhontisise ore, wa noa tsa njo ya skolo, we ya skolo. Ore aonale lapale le robalan, lisna tla la, le robalan katla la, tllo ukhontisha rifiklamo ka chumisha no ya re na, le musho wabuga arre, musho a province, ore kanetiri ya Africa burua ekaone, reaga the capital city of the Republic of South Africa, kama njurere la mu relegile, mo toropo ya Swane, realabo.
I think everybody is aware that mix generation. If they are constructive and committed to the betterment of the people's lives, it works. As NCOPE, we believe strongly in working together to reach our goals. I'll now call upon Honorable Maseko, Speaker of Hauteam.
Thank you very much to the Program Director, Co-Program Director, Mam Tandi Memela, Nobabu Uhuru Muyilwa. Bab Masangu, the Chairperson of the NCOPE, Honorable Ma Mukonyani, the leader of the NCOPE in Hauteam and the Premier of Hauteam Province. Men Ralihuko, the Chair of Chairs of Hauteam Legislature, Deputy Chair of Chairs, Baba Valentine Mbata, Mamntwanaambi, the Chief Whip of the NCOPE and members of the NCOPE who are present. O P who are present here. Tade Ramochopa, the mayor of, Executive Mayor of the city of Tswane, which is north of Johannesburg. And Tade Paxtao, the Executive Mayor of the city of Jobek and the Chairperson of Salga of Gauteng. Members of the Parliament and members of the Legislature were present here. Councillors here present, the Secretary to the National Council of Provinces, Advocate Pindela, the Secretary to the Legislature, Tade Peters Kossana, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. Program Directors, may I express my appreciation to the Chairperson of the National Council of Provinces, Babma Llangwudhe, and the National Council of Provinces, including Mamtandi Memela, the city of Tswane and the people of Gauteng who responded to the clarion call to attend the public meeting here, National Council of Provinces. We are gathered here today in the city of Tswane, the third largest metropolitan municipality in the world, the city that has got the third largest concentration of embassies after the United Nations and the United States of America, the host of the administration of the republic. We also recently witnessed a rather peculiar incident here in Tswane, a community of white Africaners gathered at the Union Building stating that it's the Red October for them. This theme, reputable, presumed that it's inspired by the Red October of the Communist Party. They adamantly handed over a memorandum stating that their community is in danger and is being killed ruthlessly on farms and their homes. It was rather unfortunate that a community of South Africans feel like this in this day and age. They made a rather amusing assertion stating that they are as endangered as rhinos and another perturbing statement uttered from the leaders was that their own are not used to being raped by another kind. This indeed certainly exposed societal and racial disparities confronted by the South Africans despite efforts in nation building. The constitution of the republic recognizes equality of all citizens despite race, class or creed. It goes without dispute that each and every South African should feel safe and protected by the state. However, found something rather disturbing by this group, its ability to disregard the national sovereignty and the most fundamental identity of this rainbow nation. The members of the group were flying a flag which once presented pain, represented pain, segregation, injustice and tyranny for many South Africans. Honorable members, ladies and gentlemen, today we gather in the city which once upon a time represented the heart and capital of South Africa's draconian rule. We should be concerned if there are people in our communities which are still hell-bent on preserving muscles of apartheid. These occurred just after we had exposed, exposed as the Gauteng Provincial Legislature, a community in Klenfontein, also here in Tswane, which is alleged to be a community which sells property along racial lines, black communities have no entry to the area and worse, it's illegally built. We are also happy that the Executive Mayor has taken the matter up and is dealing with the issue. It's unfortunate that such travises are still in the stark relative in twenty years into our democracy. It's such realities that undermine our democracy and efforts of nation building. The constitution does recognize preferences of religion, of various cultures, but this clause cannot be opportunistically used to segregate or perpetuate racial stereotypes and practices in our communities. I thought I would start off with this peculiar incident as we move faster in celebrating twenty years of our heart and democracy. We have also observed some distorted views within the media insinuating that voting is a mere favor for politicians or some of the people who are privileged in our country. Let's we be reminded through some of the actions of groupings like the Red October Brigade of our painful past, which didn't recognize every South African equal right in front of the law or before the law. Let's we be reminded that many black South Africans marched to this very same city which we now proudly call Tswane to seek justice for all, even if it means they died at the hands of the security forces of yesteryears. Honorable members, ladies and gentlemen, compatriots and patriotic South Africans and people of Gauteng, it is our responsibility and patriotic duty to protect and defend the gains of our democracy. We shouldn't naively assume that all is well and that everyone has the same interests and objectives for this country. We have made concerted efforts to bring about reconciliation, to manage diversity in order to realize the nation, national democratic society. Evidently, despite the twenty years, we still have a mammoth task ahead of us, especially for the future generation. The Gauteng Speakers Forum recently launched a citizen responsibility campaign, a campaign that seeks to address some of the, these challenges that we alluded to and that we are confronted with in nation building. As South Africans, we blindly assume that we are entitled to rights, forgetting that there is a reciprocating responsibility that comes with each right. We are eager to point our flaws, mishaps, mistakes and yes, as active citizen, it's imperative to hold government accountable. However, we should equally take responsibility for advancing society and building of our foundation of democracy. We must be the first to worry when a child is raped and killed, we must be the first to chastise all those that undermine efforts to fight corruption. For example, an issue like littering, yet we reprimand the government or municipalities for delaying service delivery. Through this citizen responsibility campaign, we seek to drive patriotism and ensure that our communities are responsible. The campaign has also targeted our citizens and our people of Gauteng in schools and our children must learn to take pride in their country from an early age and this include appropriately singing the national anthem and knowing and understanding the national symbols and learning simple yet effective habits of being a patriotic citizen. There has been numerous debates about the so-called born free, a label which has unfortunate connotation, assuming that all the people or children who were born in nineteen ninety four were born free. We must respect that they have a new struggle ahead of them and that they are going to inherit this country. Hence, it's paramount we go out there and drill in them as to why they should vote and why is voting an important aspect of democracy. The ballot gives you a choice in terms of which political party will represent your aspirations, however, voting is a paramount mechanism to preserve and protect our democracy. As the Gauteng Provincial Legislature, we have already launched our voter registration campaign in partnership with the I E C and the Department of Home Affairs and successfully we launched that at the Vale University of Technology. This has been done through the citizen responsibility campaign and we call upon every South African, every Gautengese to join us in driving the mass call to ensure that eligible South Africa do register to vote in twenty fourteen and beyond. Institutions such as the Gauteng Provincial Legislature remain steadfast in inspiring that the voice of every Gauteng person is heard by government. In twenty oh nine, we committed towards building an activist and transformative legislature that could inspire public confidence by operating in a manner that places the people at the center of its business, vigorously advocating and promoting public interest in the non-partisan way. In this way, the Gauteng Provincial Legislature becomes a true tribune of the people. It goes without saying that the National Council of Provinces remains instrumental in our interactions with communities of South Africa and it must continue to play this pivotal role. The Gauteng Provincial Legislature, in conclusion, continues to be a platform and mechanism for engagement for citizens in understanding and interacting with the Gauteng government. Hence, the petition processes of the legislature is very important. There is no need to destroy public property like what we have experienced in Bekerstal lately. Come to the legislature, put your petition before the committee and your issue will be dealt with. The slogan being your view, our vision. We thank you for being here and looking forward for a fruitful week with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Program Director. In the interest of transparency, I will say that the Program Director instructed me to shorten my speech. Allow me therefore to start by acknowledging the protocol that has been acknowledged before me and to thank everybody present here today for joining us this morning in a particularly important session of Taking Parliament to the People. And as I said, because I'm transparent, I'll cut to the chase, get straight to the point. And I'll start by avoiding indicating geographic locations. Because I represent all the municipalities of Gauteng here today. Chairperson, Premier, members of Parliament, colleagues, members of the community. We think that the opportunity to engage here is critical for us as local government, for as you would know, local government in many instances and in many countries in fact is referred to as community. It is at this level where we engage with the day-to-day issues that our communities face, whether it is their access to water, electricity, sanitation, et cetera. Yet it is here, at the level of local government, where we have responsibility of ensuring there are civic leaders who take the people along with us and represent their interests to all of government. We welcome therefore the fact that the N C O P gave us an entire week so that Rona, but it is also in this instance, an opportunity for us as civic government and as community government to raise matters that we think are important to consider as Parliament continues to engage in the current session of Parliament towards the conclusion of the term of office and in the new term of office. Allow me to take this opportunity to express some of the things we believe as local government. The National Council of Provinces and Parliament needs to apply its mind to, to enable us to improve the work that we do in our communities. We believe that certain legislative and administrative actions do require closer oversight from Parliament and their interests of local government to be represented through the N C O P. I will just isolate a few examples. Chairperson and Premier, you would know that where we are in the metropolitan municipality of Tswane, this municipality had to incorporate kunguini, nukeen sata emani limutwe di. The impact has been that the municipality of Tswane has been set back by one billion rennes to date. Now, it is well and good to make decisions about demarcation that are in the interests of communities and say let us consolidate unviable municipalities into metropolitan centers of viable municipalities. It is another though not to apply our minds to how we mitigate the negative impact of such decisions on the municipalities that have to incorporate. We believe, we believe as local government that it is important that in fact we take action both looking back retroactively and actively looking forward to say how do we mitigate the impact of demarcation on local government with the immediate pressure point being Tswane. We are also concerned about some of the executive directives, one of which has led to the near collapse of one of our municipalities in Gauteng in the form of Lissedi Local Municipality. As you would know, the directive that impacted on how that municipality can execute credit control within what is legally the correct way of executing credit control has led to this municipality facing financial ruin. I stand here on behalf of the municipalities of Gauteng and say, in this current tenure of the South African local government leadership in Gauteng, we, in the period of one year, are almost seeing the collapse of a municipality and unless something is done as a matter of urgency, I do not anticipate that this financial year will end without that municipality being forced under administration, not because it is unviable, but because we did not make the right decisions. I stand here when arugula di television sa Rona, kozarubala di bambiri every day, rebona ba tuwako Bekerstal baliko strate. Ba tuwako Bekerstal ba tla hisati tli tli bo, let me start by saying, there is no way in which when you protest you burn down your library. There is no way in which when you protest you stop the children from writing their metric exams, because that will impact on the future of the child. When in fact the rest of society prospers, the children of Bekerstal will not prosper because the community chose that as they raised their concerns, these concerns should be expressed through burning down libraries, community centers and through stopping children from going to school on the eve of their exams. However, the reality of the situation, Chairperson and Premier, is that the municipality of Western Area is financially unviable. The fiscal and financial framework of the republic The fiscal and financial framework of the Republic does not work in the interest of smaller municipalities which become financially unviable. What they are expected to do, both by government and by by the people, is simply beyond their capacity. We have situations in municipalities in Hauteing such as Western Area and Ranfontein that are facing serious financial problems simply because of how we've designed the financial instruments in government. Now if this happens in Hauteing, the Deputy Chair of eh the South African Local Government Association National who is here in his capacity of the Mayor of the Western can attest to the fact that most municipalities in the country are simply unviable. But this unviability is because of the financial and fiscal framework. We need to review this for, we can't say world-to-world municipalities throughout the country when we design municipalities that simply are unviable. We must do something about this viability, otherwise we as councillors will bear the brunt of our communities for they expect that we will do certain things, yet we do not have the money to be able to do those. And lastly, let me reflect on but just one piece of legislation. You would know Chairperson, that we have continuously raised the need for local government representation to the N C O P to be more structured and effective so that we can ourselves represent the interests of local government in Parliament. It is important so that when legislation is passed, it can be reviewed against the impact it has on local government. I will choose one, which is a random selection because in fact I can go into a head and pull many others. But an act such as the Administrative Adjudication of Road Traffic Offences Act, A R D O, has had a negative impact on both traffic policing and revenue in municipalities. Sometimes we worry about the revenue, but we don't always worry about why traffic fines are issued. When motor vehicles are unroadworthy, municipalities need the authority to be able to take action. When people speed on our roads, we need to be able to take action. This is so that we are able to improve road public safety and the effective utilisation of our roads. Now this act has simply tied our hands behind our backs. It has meant that our ability to administer road traffic offences has been impacted on negatively. We believe that in fact as the N C O P goes back and has the opportunity to reflect on this week, it is also an opportunity to reflect on the issues that we have raised as local government and the issues that have been raised by communities to ensure that we can be more effective in the work that we do. In conclusion, on behalf of all the municipalities of Hauteing, we'd like to welcome the opportunity to engage together with our communities with the N C O P and the Provincial Legislature in this initiative of Taking Parliament to the People. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm Leskar. Thank you very much eh Deputy Speaker of the Hauteing Legislature, the Chairperson of the N C O P and the Deputy Chair, the Executive Mayor of the City of Tswane and representatives of the City of Tswane, the Chairperson of Salga and the Executive Mayor of the City of Johannesburg, Madam Speaker of the Legislature in Hauteing, Members of the N C O P, M E Cs present, Members of the Legislature, Councillors, fellow South Africans, a very good morning. Firstly, let me take this opportunity and wish our matriculants, ninety-nine thousand of them in Hauteing who are going to be writing their exams, the first English paper today and say they are going to demonstrate the work that they've started twelve years ago and they must show to the world that indeed they are the children of Nelson Mandela and they shall actually do well and make us proud. It is almost twenty years of democratic rule in our country that came into being as the result of years of bitter struggle and sacrifice. It will therefore be befitting that as South Africans gathered also here through the National Council of Provinces, we share and prepare our communities in telling the story of our country. Tell it with integrity and honesty so that then no other storyteller can come and tell where we come from. But those of us who know and have been there can tell the story in a better way. We are a country that is emerging from the dark abyss of apartheid, racial discrimination and oppression. And in these few years, twenty years of democracy, has been a country, South Africa has been a country that millions of our people are proud of. In these years, we have made tremendous strides towards providing a better life for all. Under the bright light of democracy, championed by the African National Congress, clean water and sanitation has been provided to the multitudes of our people. In communities where paraffin and candles were source of heat and light, electricity has been connected and supplied. In a household with no source of income, hope and dignity has been restored through the social security grant. Those who don't know may say it is not sustainable to provide the social security grant. But those of us who know that in Manzeville, in Katlehong, in Zola, in Sochan Gouve, in Piti Disulejoang, Batu, Bakonahore, Babu, Babu Hiselichaba, Kacheleté, Euba Ifuankimusso, Kahore, had they not been funded or given this grant, Ika Tibi Zolale Ziko. And we therefore not shy away that we'll continue to provide these grants. Even as people are queuing to vote in nineteen, in twenty fourteen, we'll continue distributing the stress relief packages so that our people can actually go to bed with a meal and we can restore the dignity of the African woman. A young man from a family with no prospects over achieving higher education, an engineer has been molded and produced through government scholarships. Mo Mohauteng, a young man from Orange Farm, today is an engineer, having gone through a no-fee school, having been funded by the Hauteing government in terms of her tertiary studies, today has taken over the responsibility for Fanda Merve and Matlangui is an engineer of good standing. Unfortunately, he has no relationship with the Chairperson of the N C O P, but he's just a Matlangu from Orange Farm, the south of the city of Tswane in Johannesburg. Where once an overflowing river was a challenge to cross in a remote village in Kwasulu Natal, a bridge has been built and roads are constructed. Security of tenure has been given to millions of poor who had no hope of ever owning a property in their lifetime. Here in the city of Tswane, the Executive Mayor and myself can attest, Chairperson of the N C O P, that a hundred-and-thirty-year-old granny for the first time became a beneficiary in terms of home ownership fourteen years ago when she was hundred-and-fourteen years old. For the first time last week, she was handed a title deed, she's a true property owner. There is reason to celebrate twenty years of our democracy. School nutrition has put back a sparkle in the face of young primary school children. But what we have done going beyond our mandate as the Hauteing Provincial Government, we have also strived to restore the dignity of the African girl child who every month has always been absent from school because she's in a childhooded family or the family cannot afford to provide her with a dignity peg. Today, that situation that is not a choice for a girl has now been given support and care by our Hauteing Provincial Government. And every, every second month without fail, we distribute not less than twenty-five thousand dignity pegs to the African girl child whose absenteeism has now reduced, her dignity has now been restored and has moved away from a sugar daddy. However, the reality that we still have to contend with is the intricate relationship between race, class and wealth. This complex reality is historical and and political in our country. Discrimination and brutal apartheid policies exalted falsely the racial virtues of the whites while debasing and discrediting those of the blacks. We must appreciate that somebody somewhere in Kofimwaba, somebody somewhere Kotsitzing in the North West, somebody somewhere in Paris is still waiting for a house. And somebody somewhere, a young person in Hauteing, a young person in the Western Cape is still unemployed. It is our responsibility therefore to inspire hope and confidence and embrace every intervention that government is putting in place, including, including the youth wage subsidy or the tax incentive that has now been pronounced by the Minister of Finance. It is something ekalela es vivaneni. And therefore we cannot throw away that that seeks to make an intervention. We must give it a chance, let test, let's test it in the best interest of those who are unemployed. Whilst also not exposing those that are employed to possible retrenchments, but realise that half a loaf is better than nothing. The country can't sit and fold its arms when our youth are loitering in the streets and are exposed to drugs, substance abuse and gangsterism. We also have, as a nation through the National Council of Provinces and Taking Parliament to the People, have to preach the gospel according to the National Development Plan. A plan that we all appreciate, just like the Bible has got many interpretations depending on an individual's mood and the platform and the congregation. That it will not be perfect for every individual and for every situation. But at least that is the starting point that must be a shared starting point for all of us as South Africans. And we must actually use that as a minimum base document that must unite us as a nation. We have never shan't meaningful engagement as a nation and as the government, as long as it is conducted in civil and constructive fashion. That's why we pride ourselves as a province through the rollout of the Hauteing Freeway Improvement Programme that we have rolled, we have spent not less than twenty-five billion in the development of road infrastructure in our province. Those of you who are not residents of Hauteing, you can now be told that we now have roads that have got eight to ten lanes moving to the same direction taking you from Johannesburg to Tswane as compared to what you had a few years ago. We now have roads that are connecting Hauteing to the North West, connecting Hauteing to Kwasulu Natal and the Free State. And it is money that internationally has been the best practice that it is not only through the fiscus that you roll out this kind of infrastructure. You have to draw private sector investment. But we also have to tell the residents and the nation that we can't actually expect to actually pay for the roads that are used and not charge somebody from Kofimwaba through the fuel levy to pay for the Hauteing Freeway Improvement Programme. If you do not want to use the toll roads, go onto N fourteen, go onto the old Pretoria Road, go onto other alternative routes, get into Hauteing, use the B R T, access the metro rail that has been revitalised and utilise our bus rapid transport system that is now being rolled out in the city of Tswane in Ekuruleni and phase two of the city of Johannesburg. We're good at last Puma corner, but we must not actually despair because what we have done has not been done by many, many other countries over years and many decades. And therefore as a nation, we need to all claim us being a nation of Nelson Mandela, somebody who was bold and determined to take a risk, that those then who are given the responsibility to lead, benefit of doubt, let them lead us and surely they will never lead us astray. Because what we cannot do, call for the period and the duration and the distance that we have been on the N one. And let us use the fiscus to build better houses, to create jobs, to improve the quality education of the African child and avoid a situation where we do not have a reliable public transport because an ordinary worker who works in Roslin is not going to pay for the ITOL. Because we have exempted the taxis, we have exempted the buses, even the buses that are going to go in those roads. Even the taxi that takes you to go and watch Kizer Chief beating Supersport in Tswane are not going to pay on the on the, on the ITOLS. Precisely because government has actually realised that we will not be demanding from the poor and the workers. We will be expecting those that are on private vehicles, but public transport is exempted. But also, no one within a period of a month will be using or paying an amount more than a hundred-and-fifty rennes. So we need to tell our story, we need to be given a platform, let the media also give us the soundbites so that then we can tell and celebrate twenty years of democracy by saying it from the horse's mouth. We are the horse, don't listen to any other body, especially now during the silly season. We have to remain a government that has got integrity, credibility, that does not actually concede because of a silly season, but be able to tell our people. In conclusion, Program Director, we gathered here just a week before voter registration. As we celebrate twenty years of democracy, let us mobilise South Africans. Those who are living in newly built houses that were not there in two thousand and nine with our last general elections, go and register where you live. To the students who are in tertiary institutions coming from outside of the areas where the tertiary institutions are, go and register where you study. To those of you who are living in Tswane and are working in Mo Mo Tswane, rather register where you work because there is no public holiday. Do that to defend democracy, do that to tell the story of our democracy, but most importantly, do it for Nelson Mandela. Thank you. Thank you.
Aralibuka tonakolu viva, tonakolu viva. Viva premier of Khauteng, viva. I want to take this opportunity to welcome the Minister of Human Settlement, Minister Koni September. You're welcome, Minister. Minister wezinto. Minister wezinto. Seabong. Allow me at this point in time, under the stewardship and leadership of the deputy chairperson, now I'm instructed and I'm a child, so when a mother gives an instruction, a young boy of my age cannot refuse. Our Sainte Hare, it is a responsibility to introduce and let the chairperson stand up to address the House, but she's given me that responsibility. Chairperson Nino Matlangu, please welcome him.
Sanbona ninonke ndlini. Nyume la. Angina uktuitaskati seban xsholosa lapemufa. Uktiska tispelile uguame ukti ngivali le siskaba somchlangano sokala. Goto agemangxoni pe, ngokbingelela undu na ngkulu wala e Khauteng Province. Ngibingelele o executive mayor Bongo ubaburamkopa, ubabtawu, bakulma ngama south ikenama north inse zairesecha. Angse angaitoli kahle, ngzaresecha kahle. Ngibingelele utepiriche, no tepirish speaker abaspatile umsebenzi, ulesiskati. Executive members, the Minister of Human Settlement, thank you for arriving. You can see the people are ready to talk to us. Thank you very much, everybody in the House. Manitati leli tu ba lukuti mbongaka kulu. Uba holi basa Khauteng Province na ba holi basa Tswane City. Uguba bassebenzi sana nati kahle kanga. Ugushe umkini biwetu okulumisana nani, gulelifiki lonke. Uguzukhamba kahle upumelele, ngibona ngalendu, ukwalagwayo. Ukutibenzu umsebenzi omkulu kakulu. Futi sizo banabo, sibe speke lowenzo benishtela gona, guse giopela lelifiki. In National Council of Provinces, ya kala lolushelo, eleven years ago, two thousand and two. Umaspeke mufa emsebenzinie eswenzile, sibona sense umsebenzi omuchela kulu. Goto agenlela ise sayinde ukyapambili. Uguba silungise esinye izinto. Jengoba ka ubabutawu ese shiso, ngiambonga kakulu uguba maspinisa uksebenzi sana. Pagati wesal kaga nyene National Council of Provinces, ugushe sibona uktilemi tetu. Engaleti izinto esfanele ebantwi nisugua zugui kupula e parlamenti. Bakwasu sebenza kahle impilozeno sebenno. Sizo gwenza ke logo ngokbambisanaka nyenaabo. Ngoba sinao ama lungelo. Ukuti suubumba umtetu aslin daily executive, ukutisnige sipil. I committee le parlamenti lenga introchuza umtetu e parlamenti. Gaantine lungu le parlamenti lenga uintrochuza umtetu e parlamenti suupasis. Emvagokubasestrotu senenaboge, sisaybuka yonke leo umtetu leo. Ntandukbonga kakulu ukefuti, ukuti la umasleli la namchlanje. Si imbuso yonke emitatu ikon. U national government ulapakati wenu namchlanje. U provincial government ulapakati wenu namchlanje. U local government ulapakati wenu namchlanje. In N C O P is the only house that can bring these houses together under what Mr. Tausset Cooperative Government. Ngoba kufuneka sense icheni soonke. Uksugela ku national government sihukena province sihuke no maspala. Ugushe soonke suguazu ugleta ifiso ze nuginina, ni guazu kumelela impilozeno sebenno. Ngakoke, sibona uktiguushre, ngoguya komtetu wesegeloguti lonyaga. Sizela e Khautin, gulo maspala wesitiya Tswane, sizo ukulumisana nani. Goto agesukuluma ne province yonke, sikuluma ne South Africa yonke umasila, sikuluma nabobonga bahlali basa South Africa. Si unalendio kesipisa ngukuti participate in democracy. Ngamanyama kama abantu have got to participate. Ngoba itina enisketile uktisinmele e parlamenti. Ngakoke asigua zukuba sinmele nina ninga participate. Namchlanjeke intye inkuli fikilonke is to come and interact with you, to listen at you. All the governments that are here, representative government will respond and even the members of the National Council of Provinces will be working together with you. Ninga kulumi izinto ezimbi upela. Nalese zintle umbuso onenzelesoona siyafuna ugusizo. Ngakoke ituba lingeleno gulolonke lefiki, nyankela ka ubasxoni pe iskati. Egushe zoonke izinto se tu zambe ngachelo. Zintanu izinto esaketwa nguhulumeni umasuka ngo two thousand and nine ukutisaupegana naso. Esimpilo, esinfundo, fighting crime, creation of decent work and sustainable livelihood, rural development, including land reform and food production and security. We are interested to hear from you, what you think has been achieved and where there are still challenges, please do tell us that there are still challenges there. As you know, jenga bahlali basa South Africa, development, I want to emphasize this, is a process. Development is a what? Is a process. Gufanana umteona ovele namchlanje, anega hambe namchlanje. Gufana nale tende, nelabone mchela pagati kulu, alakiwangani la ngalini, uhambo esela hambayo. Ugushe logo eswenzile, sischayri chombe sitiwenzakele kahle. Logo oknagaenzakali, sisho ukutistrela ukutiloku wenzakale, ngoba gusasalele move. Ntela sebenzaneke, ngaleyo ntelaleyo. As you reflect, you must keep in mind where we are coming from since nineteen ninety-four. For example, why we note the challenges that we still face here and in the rest of the country, we also know that many inhabitants of this city live in a safe and secure environment and have access to economic opportunity, a mix of safe and secure housing and tenure types, reliable and affordable basic services, education, entertainment and cultural activities and health, welfare and social services. Gulefikike, nazi izinto esabesizenza e kakulu kazo. Namchlanje esizo okuluma ngo local government, ne human settlement kanyenamaanzi. Guzo tiksa sa ekseni, sikulume ngesimpilo ne social development. Entamba ame emvagoma tina skulume ngesinfundo ne sports and recreation and arts and culture. Ngolo statue sizo okuluma ne crime amapoisa, sikulume ngesinto se women, children and people disability. Eguso tike ngolo sinne, ekseni, sikulume ngesinto se economic development and youth, sikulume emvagoma tina ge agriculture and land reform and water again, ngoba siyahambisanale izinto. Guza utika ngolo slanu, umongameli wesizuwe, umxoni pegi ucomra Jacob Zuma, uzabe kona pagati wenu e kuluma nani. Zoonkeke lezinto egisbalayo, siyesafiga la, saban umchlangano ehamaskrall la inya ngipelile, sazopega ukutiwenzakalani, safaga shellinda we ninge kuya yonkele ndavo. Abanyebenubabe kona umastraftale program. Isoge izinto esakuluma ngazo namchlanje esinyeke ziza ungeselelo. U umasisebenzi sana soonke, impumela wetu sizo ubona. Goto umasngithuleka uksebenzi sana, anegesuubono impumela. Ngitandukbongage bonka ba holi abasetafleni, guzo zoonkele zinto abasukulumile, umsebenzusuktalile, basukubeke nige, ngabonga kakulu mtkinislan.
Seabongaba baba Matlangu, thank you very much. Mchale nisanda. Thank you, thank you very much. Mosebesi waletsazi utlo thoma biyali. Ma ikemisetsu apito e ke honela, baachi, ba Tswane, ba social nguvu. Monyetla waghutlachisa ma ikutwa bonae. Mababi lili fapala tama iso yakagwa yamathu. Muso waselchaye, kapaha wana libothata, mababili pimelo yametsi. Retlochroome tsa mosebesi uchotoka wana yano, chufitlakawa no tlok. Kawawa no tlokor tla bere, rile ochabela. Chobanasaraka sejaa. Harifeza morao chamoka tuo tlok, retzala katiro e, yagoreza nokumamelana. Malunga, enombusu wasemakaya, kanyi umbono wetu, malunga ne zindlu, kanyi amanzi. Sizo mamelana ke, guse kushayu five o tlok namchlanje. Ebesichaileke, sasa, ekseni, siza wunkala ngonanu tlok. Na waza unmema abantu bagiti. Nini ama memberswe parlamenti namchlanje. Sizo mamela ama lungu e parlamenti. Abantu, abas tumele parlamentu kutisibamele. Ituba leno namchlanja ke uktikulume nina, tinasmameli. Nazinkoke lisesukulumile, batkatileke umsebenzuwa. Kina kobeale yagore rena, biyale kasichaba. Renne lechu nule monyetla, waghubua, waghoreza, sicha. Kamusotchusday, kanaino tlok. Retla bere bonza na hape moparlamenti e, remametzilu nasicha. Mababili tama pilo. Le social development. Ore kaba muso ona ochokometse batu wabahuulu. Le batu baba acholafezing, bana, djalo djalo. Retlo tsala lakamusebesi onu ufitlakawa, one o tlok, real lunching usani, riku tla hape katuo tlok, hariku tla usani katuo tlok. Retla bere bonza na mababili tza lifapala tuto. Sports, recreation, arts and culture. Mona wutlo kawa wutlachisa mobila kabaye tabeli. Ore ana muso oh, eh, o, katotoo tsi heti za ma ikutwa le ma ikemisetsu. Awira waghuridikwetlo, zarunalezo one, mababili lifapala tsa mikon, tlahola sizo, ore akanete ridikwometse. Ke kalabu bedi, kalabu raru, la lele diwa hape, ochotla moparlamenti, letle kubua, le ba emedi baluna, mababili tama iso yaseponisa, ochotla hona holuansha, ochotla kazebe. Hobutlo koba khaetsuri, parlamenta i kutwa le kaditebe, hori tama iso yaruna yaseponisa. Legolonsha butchoku tebe diritibati. Ochatela le hobetela kabana, lebo maruna, buchodu, lebo nuenue, corruption. Akanete relisicha ba, limmuso waruna, re, redirisana lim sicha. Koridikwetloze relike kodifukota. Kalabu raru katuo tlok morao halanch, retla lemamela hape parlamenta sicha. Mababili hulutwela kaditu kela tsabomme. Amalungele abo mama, abantuana, nabantu abakuwa segili. Siza odinaki ngakulu kuti. Abantu basa social nguvu, I was here last week at the Philadelphia Secondary School or High School for People with Disabilities. They raised issues just last week and it will be interesting to, to listen and to ensure that parliamentarians also have an opportunity to listen to the grievances of that school. Now, this is the school that has produced Deputy Minister Buchobani, it has produced a superstar sports person, Obabastole, who has made us proud at the Paralympics recently and many other able South Africans who are differently or physically disabled, who have emerged out of this school. This hearing will be about listening to their story so that as the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa and the legislatures as a whole, represented by the National Council of Provinces, we can take into account the grievances of you, the people of South Africa. On Thursday, kanaino tlok, rekopa na hape moparlamenti kalabune, ngolesine, ngolesina zabesekuluma kenyenta baso mnot. Enonka ben umsebenzi, ngakulu ngakulu malunga, eh, no lucia, elengasabenzio. Sizo bonisana ne parlament, kute kahle kahle yine nganzewa, ugwenza shoo, ukuti ekonomi etu, eh, isletela emsebenzi. Jengoba umme yavas Tswane sekulumile, ukuti the problem in South Africa today, it is the problem umgalingani kwabantu, okshopega, nonka ben umsebenzi, ngakulu ngakulu as it affects young people. We will push with the Parliament of the People on Thursday from nine o'clock until one o'clock, will go on lunch here. You'll get the instruction information ukuti lunches obakupi. Ngoto o tlok, ngolesine, sizo thanganafuti, ekseno ngoto o tlok, sikulumisana ke malunga ne agriculture, land reform and against ekulume mchambe, ukuti singanza kancha ne kutila baba funu umsebenzi emchabat, emchabene, eh, baben amanzi so that they can employ themselves. Sizo kobakanja luke bagiti until quarter to four and at four o'clock, ngolesine, e parlamenta sizuwe, isa wchlangan, uleholo le futi, wonke umuntu, uzawamkelo payo holo in. Sizo okulumisana ke, eh, ngesnyesinto, eh, ama program director basa autaza, kute guswe tzakala da kancha. Ngolesanu, o president welizuwe, ubaba Jacob Zuma, uzabenana nati, uzokuluma nati abantu basa social nguvu and the city of Tswane. Inse ngisho ke bagiti, eh, eprograme etu sadkovega ngalentle. At this point in time, I now want to take this opportunity, maybe first to thank honorable deputy chairperson of the N C O P for the sterling work that she has done, including baptizing me to chair this biggest convention of the people of the Republic of South Africa. It has indeed been an honor to have had this opportunity. I'll now take this opportunity bagiti to raise Honorable M H Mukobi and Honorable R S Litwaba to chair the session on public hearings, on local government, human settlements and water issues. Honorable members, you are welcomed on stage. As we do that, I'll invite Babedi. As you do that, I'll invite Babedi Cultural Sarra Khanan, what is it called? Babedi Cultural Group to render one item and then the masters of the program will take over from us. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ralleboch. Ralleboch.
Dumela. Towe. Koya muare. Ke kope la di MEC. Jerele unho na fa. MEC was Human Settlement, Cooperative Governance. Kaba lohona ba, wata ba, mohodi moba joina panel. Thank you. Naki matru me hampre moho. Ke kwa kakuabu lobe du kakuakula zanee. Kya ba. Kya ba otshoyale wato kwa. Ki tro sipili samudiro. Hakiti. Ki na leme onarapulitwaba. Ritlo tusana osipili samudiro. Ki mudiro omu omuholu, omu important. Karuko ona hori. Ritlenka ona hori le nasicha. Le na watu. Leho no kfuwa monyetla na koya hubelela. Je zeli tswenyao. Li ministera dihona. Ava premiera wahoona. Ekzecutive meya dihona. Ma councila ra hona. Wata baba, nganakwa na siris bolela. Wata ba lifari karabo. Kamra wari putis. Ifele. Ta ba holo koro ho sipili samudiro omu yara. Wima. Kala na watu, lese na chumishaano. Ritlo kope na chumishaano. Le lena, ki platform ya lena. Ritlo bolela kamuholi nyaka wakahona. Ma ralitro bolela masapa. Le bolela ntwengwe le kamuholi le kano kwaata. As long as you are not insulting people. Me onarapulitwaba ki na lena. Otatawu ki zivisa. Ya, waho namu, amu morao hakaku bolela. Lele ni kitome. Ki tro kope la hori. Kabakala hori litage. Re kanos ho nohubelela matro ho mopila koma ra ho bidagona lisufinyan. Hori batwali mike, wali batameytenyan. Namopila ribelele line. Akna kiri rojeka. One, kobele rokamo. Two, three. Kobele line. Batwali mike. Wabasbi sorry mike, where are the people who are dealing with the mics? Please, can you set them correct for our people to to talk? Ta ba kulu ki na koo. Time is an investment. Whether short or long, let's use it correctly. Ki tro kope la ri rojitaru. Is there a road that side? Kuna rokamo. Alright. Ki nyaka watu wa wa shana le murao. For ho roho na kontrol. Li shana le murao. Ka no more, ke five five. Alright, di mike liya. Eh, re me hanyana bu mama kamo. Wanyoko re entertain. Towe. Arre batu fe we. Arre di putwa we. Ki ba tiba miri le misa ule thago nono bakuba kireba ulala. Ki ba tiba utama kale thoto. Asen li thoto kituba nisidwa nito amo ya. Arre tukuluka we. Tukuluka uurtli shite ruto fetu. Ritobi na kawe, nara khumucha kawe, nari tugulu. Wa so. Itanga li thamthembatu arivalena. Ma jajali nata okichi we. Le lena li tali vitwa wakuku nubona khodo. Wah! Wah!
Dumela ngba hai tu. Dumela. Legai. Riting. Eh ke kopa hule atre sagiduzimo fazi. Kamaba ka itzing, it's not out of disrespect, but really out of a situation that is beyond my control. However, I feel privileged and honored to be co-directing this important session. Ne kitlo ku parkomorao ridule fazi. Ritrompe ngmere ko ridulen fazu rutwe lenhantlo riwaya wye. And show some decorum to the House because this is Parliament's sitting. In the interest of time, I want to really take this opportunity eh to thank the Chairperson of the National Council of Provinces for allowing me to co-chair this session with my fellow Chairperson, Chairperson Mukobi. Platform is a very important platform because it gives perspective and meaning to the Constitution. Yari dumela hurikabulela. Yirudumela to engage in the interest of building a better South Africa, particularly a better Tswane. So it has been said that all spheres of government are here. It's therefore important for us to take advantage of the presence of core leadership, both of national, of Parliament, of the NCOOP, of the Legislature, and of the municipality. So let us take advantage of their presence because this is a once-off. Parliament has respected the community of of Tswane by availing itself to them, to yourselves, so take advantage of this session. Ritlo biyamela unyana. Ke kopa ri biyamela unyana, it's want to re-observe the boboche. Session eh herilibela te program, ke one and a half hours. So one and a half hours eh. One and a half hours, it's want to ribereki se habu, rishumisha habu. It's in the sense that it is just this session that we have to discuss item eh. It's a one and a half hour session. Ritlo dumela baduli ba, ba moso shanguve libom. Sorry. Rokopa baduli to only utilize an hour. And then the other thirty minutes. Ritla ifadi panelistsari na who are here with who are with us in front of you to respond to issues that we have raised. So in doing that, it's important to observe time. Motoha bulela, ne rokopa ora abe mukuswane. Don't take more than two minutes or three minutes if possible. Be as short as you can to allow the next person to speak. Motoha se za wulela, ariska tlapan matro, karu tlapan matro ho kutiana. Hori kidi house rules, ke se kiduma oka re kadi hoopula. Henze reire bulela kati. Lidiselfo onu, ne ritlo kopa reditu, didi timiwe. Heo monga bulela ritrom perukwe le. Usafi cheluru omu nga bulela renara hanana lisasibuang and then we start booing. So let us discourage ourselves from doing that because I know we are a disciplined group. Eh, I think it's also proper before ki dumela, eh my co-chair, to introduce to you the panelists who are in front of you. Herilibela program, we were supposed to be joined by the Honorable Minister of Cooperative Governance and Traditional Affairs. Ribulelozi minute ago that he will not be available to another commitment, but if he's here, it's a bonus and we'll appreciate his presence. We also have amongst our panelists, can you raise your hand? Eh Minister Koni September, Minister of Human Settlements. We eh, the next panelist is Honorable Mekwe, who is not here, but we, in her place, eh we have Honorable MEC Papo. Honorable Papo will respond to issues as they present themselves, but Honorable Papo in honesty is standing in the place of Honorable Mekwe. MEC wa re na wa mohauti. Reynale hapo councila wa lo loneli murata ngibilelu mizi councila ngonyama. Ki wa city of Tswane. Eh ki his MMC of the city, responsible of housing and sustainable human settlement development. Kamkuwa ke ba badile, ke ba tobaling butshoka akir. Biyano ngileba tungbabo butshoka. Ari ba dirising mehe. Ari budising di pozo te di director, ba kono respond directly to our questions. Eh at this point in time, I'll hand over to you, eh co-chair, eh to run the rest of the program. Thank you.
Dumela once more. Eh, rekope la horo roska wa le shata please. Kala di ra le shata, li nyakwa tala nokele we, rekasi kwaale mopila. Ritlo sipidi samudiro aranaso. Agitlo kia ten ten or five five. Ki tro no kata across karu one, two, three. One, two, three. Ta wana mona koe, erefiki sa wongo, na kena matu bagi. Otshoma mo war one. Oh, one, two, la na wura. Ra wuya kamo kawa namu kwanu. Khufitla na moro wana wura na koe, erefikika na koe. Mongoloa kava thoma kamo.
Dumela ngma Afrika. Without much ado, kilibelisa inchoring, kilo oska mosupye, representing Lebanon, residents of our twelve. The three-page documente na eh, I'll not be able hoka dilaka mosomwe whatever, that is entered in here. Kametso Tswana eh. And therefore, I'm not going to waste time. Ki tro kopa hori because ki twiri two sets. Ki whoever was delegated to one ke panela leadershipi de, he or she must attach his or his signature, wonsorakane te, or receive it te te wohe na. Ki tama isana le the directive which was issued by our former President Tata Madiba. Eo eneng ibuaka hori bato. Ba fiwe mato, transfer your ownership upon all state-funded properties, not some, all. It is also based more the law property and it is also based leko the principles oza where the former Putaswana government is associating the money sitaoka hamatu, agibuangkaona. Alien Development Bank of Southern Africa, isn't South Africa, which yona in nature, in link, an institution. Eh itusang the poor and the somehow economically disadvantaged people. Now, here lawyer through this document. Le tro makala tusi hori. We were sold, for an example, to include about twenty-three thousand rand. The charter then this guy rocketed eh because of the interest eh, ranging from twenty-five thousand rand up until The charter then this guy rocketed eh because of the interest eh ranging from twenty-five thousand rand up until a hundred and eighty thousand rand. We are very much aggrieved. We are requesting with due respect, hori, please, ngele refer the dignity that we deserve. Because if you don't have a title deed, come on to, how konohu putuluwa. And we are also aggrieved by the information that was communicated to us eh allegedly having been said by the Honorable Premier. How not tell law eh, we are just saying, or, here lawyer kene, the premier who really, di kusela geta eh matambo amutope. We felt eh offended, eh re ko pa hori, ayi tu hori, we are rightful owners, tamaduale. Also, le here, or, there are kids, body parents, but for fitting, they are the beneficiaries, but in kusotwana kala letebia. We request with due respect, as a plea for a little to see. Akiti nowore, ke f man, documente eh, wakan sayenela, keska senyasba, kialabo.
Wawa na olali submission, wawa na oli tokuma, wanyaka oli, oli fa bat. Honale tafula komu rau. Le wawa na oli tava jeri very personal, ma tata abo ona, koru eh, eh individual. Eh, maybe afaba na oli miz electricity ele personal. Honale tafula komu rau kuwa yari submission. Eh, I recognize or honale, line ni abu four, ya ba tuwa keshu ba tuwa, na ba siti kanen, le wana tava fasuwa kaba, kamola, site eh. Number two, le tava number four. Line two.
Ya, na ki Samuel Mayne, kinnako what it seven, motswan. Eh, ya kakohori, honale, kinnamo extension twelve, and extension twelve fully extension eh thirteen. Ke plake te lurdi R D P edite mara hawanadi te. And honale sistime lo re, re bona ele rai eh, ele nko extension six, leko, leko, and extension seven. Mo elunguru puso he aha dinku, ye ta di te. So runa eh, ntoongela konseina re, especially leko extension twelve. Ranale kontraka eight lili ngabe eh, ya ha dinku, and eh safe eh, and ya nu, eh, eh feza, eh feza, eh luiza, eh ba du di kawre, and eh ba kete ba tu ba, eh ba ketul. And eh, eh ya, ya, ya bu rau. Ne rabatla munkwa, reufetisi wa munkwa wadi informal eh settlement. Hule will, ho, eh, hulewe liwe kapele ba tu ba, ba limo di waiting list because of, di tuten chite diya hu anta R D P. Di fuwa ba tu ba di, ba di, ba ilunguru bamudi squata kempie. Whilst ba tu ba la ba ilunguru keswa kaba le ne gamodi waiting list, kialabo.
Re leboha ku du, kuka re kamo kari buli di dikaswana le, ta te kamo, rabatru the point. Ta hona, obulela kau fele kare. Line three.
Eh, kwa bulelan kime ma valo i block eh, so xanguve. Ke la kataba ya mabone, ya me eti, moma wene kiko lota thirteen thousand, and eh kiko la mdele. Iwa ni kamola pe, ya mbal.
Dumela. Kisalfi na mbambi from what eight? Since, since last year, kitop, eh, 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 le project, eh sumulutu ya fatal esoko wati ni aruna kuwa eight, mara kia hamaskrala ohut. So eh relay, zeribereka, eh zeriberek, ne kilimutoki pilanki alu, kuwalwa di upset eh. And then eh, eh, kwe diya matomo, four tonight ya matomo kahola three hundred eh, ya wedi kahola seven hundred eh. Ya bu four, ya na six hundred, ya na uru, ka jena war, eh, sumular te na mo, sumulutu te na mo, motswan. Arisno te na motswani, General Code Neta li B two A tlako wati ni aruna. Ah, koru bereke la ngafla, ambia team leader, ya na uru, arisno snbia team leader. Kitok, kitsumulutu, re kibereke, eh be kuhola pe se, eh se amin, kuhola utwana le baba ere kibaba. Ya rense kuhola kame kuyarika July, sixteen sa July. Ma me za atena ku merokon arye na, umfulu samovu team leaden, obia jimna chabalaleli eh because. And eh karu, umfulu sa biya iluri, akar biya kweina, team leader kabukira kaweina. So tu la temutwa mbele team leader, ato nklusa mobu, team leaden, ah biya mutowe na muniaka. Ar, ar, kina kuhi ti, au tomputa silo, ke san ti kufulu sa ne kina le right there, fulu sa, oh rata, osarat. Ka kuwa la burife, ka ya ko, chamber kaisel, ka fitla ka fa George Machi la burife. Ya Rex no fa George Machi la burife, and eh ya na hori, ka well, eh ki itza kamola, ka kremama meza ayemomuniaku anrari. Ofi ta biya uyako chamber, uyaka mo, keisel emoba tseri bitin mote. Ar, and au te ni kamola waruhan, karu akar ruhan, na kifile George burife, ah na mutsa torin ka ruhan, kifle mula katlapaula. Because nona le ba tbanatseri bitin libona, ba luru, ba katsalu sa luru, na kiro, kifle mula katlapaul. So ura biya arri, ku, kuwa merokon, kitok biya haye, because au te ni kamola. And untlali, le kira kina le right there complain, fa kisa kotofal. Atoma, amohela deposto, le fa kisi deposto. Whena, eh, expecta uru karu, oh, 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 code Neta, otantu me, me di peosale mosatwane line. Eh be ya na ura awa, ah, na ura te. Akimo merokon, ofi tayana. Ofi tayana akimo merokon. And eh, pes lipiaka last, last mandi, kile iri na kuhoti, kisa hola. And eh, kipukpela, ba lukis ba solvekesiaka ne, bampe cheleta ka, eh, sa lete morau. And eh, bamboi sete merokon, and eh, hape ki ileko S C M A. Eh, ki akos S C M A, ki emi kwe djo, oh, oh, te uru kesakaisolviu. Ka krenuru aisolviu, ka wela kosi S C M A, ba ndabar kesaha kamo rikas konu isolva, san ti oko, salga. Katuwa, ka, ka, na kasalga mo ilimote. Ba eh be ka fone la lu hotla ni azoom. Ba ndabar ki ekoh, bagen kaisel, ki seri forma bagen kaisel, la hayana. Asingi krei respond, hayana, kukupela meyara, aisolvekesiaka, kukupela wana la li meyara kabuyeina, hayana.
Alright, Cecile. Eh, re koupela, oh, 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 tieta biya haho. Look, uyako mraho iwa di shene. If, if, ife ba tva, va komu rau ba ino te, hona ya nu, ya komu rau. Line number, varu honale, line, line number four, amshoke la koma fe lo.
Eh, na kina, ma keka, na kina mo, so xanguve block L. Kina lebo tata ba, makua areki sang di nkluta re na. Boommelebo ntatera, twareo adimachalate, ba nyaka di title deeds. After di title deedsi, ba chancha di title deedsi taruna, ba di fa, di investors abo ona, ba di rekeseza di investors abo ona. Di investor ya no di ritro sakamodi nklun. Ya no ne kitlo kopela obulela le Minister of Housing eh, because of kitwiri, di listi sa ba tu ba ba tu lenmo di nklun, mo kilin teyumo.
Alright, thank you. And also, document, we shoku mraho kuwa tafule, ne da rubulete kayo. Eh, kita correcta something, ne kiri le honale ba tuwa kosi tikanen, ita aba one. Vali ya ba two, three, four, five. Arri ku kamo.
Kukulu mayina.
Dumela.
Dumela mbahol.
Dumela mbaholo.
Ok, ankem.
Dumela mbaholo, ya bulala mke Rachel tabadira, kinnako ote di seven. O tata ba kamo kinnamo te ngakena mezi. Ki kono fetza seven days yo, tle kisa tlapi. Kinnale wana wanai, ne se kemu koupela me, hor, au mukoupela mezi ka two lead. Ha pulaha ene mezi antanela, kamon, mkinamo mukuku wa two rumu, ke lala ke wo di mahuilche kisa na mo faz. Ha geri ki akoma kancela ra ngwaka, oru mona antarki tawakita mo we. Katuha katsama ya ka, kosan kwa karu koi ri botakosan kwa. Ha kifitla kwa kakerababa hola A N C balu kote. Baru kewala la la mo kancela ra, mo kancela ra rudlotla kuwa na katjegu. Ta we, mwa hapeke ta we ngadi te. Ha pulaha ene ha gi cliniki, ha gi krei treatment. Ha geri ki ako, ko cliniki ngiloba, botahor ne, ketsoriki ba kela horu pulaya na, kolo ya ka ene umbrella, baru wana havana di kolo ise waka ta moni. Ke wana o tata ba kinnale wana, and eh, no antokomela. Yorin ha bulala le na kato, ka, o tata wa wunthla hella. Hona ya nu, mmo, mozahor ba mu chifte male mote, sonso kora ba mu se ba mu ise od nanjin. Ha kitu ra ba mu isa nanjinin, na kuwa sala ke wo, mwa ke mangaka. Ha kiwa, la ha kiwa la, la ha kiya mu den, den, no ke ena ampe kuse.
Kialabo ha, kukupeti horu, wango ba le di serious personal problem. Le di fe tafular na komu rau. Eh, honale announcement eh, kinyoko yidira, ona ya nu. Re koupela, Emily Mpenyanu, from extension five. Group ya hahu, ya obata, kua kweni kuwa. Emily Mpenyanu, from extension five. Group ya hahu, ya obata, ewe mechi, kua kweni ngela, next to the screen. Thank you.
Dumela. Na kina mashia mha le otswa zone fourteen ni Rasmus, what eh di na eh. Koru na ngote engi, hao na mezi, hao na mabone. Ure repila bu pelobo, osatwane le ba tu ba bang, baru tswane ra tswana, mara ranaha ra tswane le ba tu ba bang. Batu ba ira di no te si le engi, babu la ya ba tu ba ba la tala kore na, baru ki illegal connection. Cause babamba iko heti zinyoka, mo ba na mote. Rena rapalu, ho ba ta mezi, osna chalate ya ore kala paipi, okaswa neli mezi, sonso ona mezi li di polo hor. Tswane, maspa la waruna, oru mezi di jojo te, ke hadi na mezi, ki tu yes, le kajeh ku kia lebu.
Ra leboha, obamu kutwani, arri ku.
Eh, dumela. Eh, ne kukupela motswara ma rapo hori, tafula ilu bulalan kaya ona komu rau kuwa, I think. Re tla komu rau kuwa, ona tafula ilu bulalan kaya ona.
Alright, alright, just, re koupela staff, please, can you assist these people? Wherever you are, come and show, 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 show them where you are, please. Waliva ta, walvon komu rau, can you quickly take them there, eh staff? Alright, that was your point, that.
Eh, dumela. Eh, dinalaka kitamsan ngamkize eh, kinnako ri ti ti.
Wait, wait. Staff, re alukupela se mo, mo, motuko nyaka tuso. The officially chair in the parliament, re alukupela. Baba bere kau kari submission, ita linka mutu bo, le mutusi. Thank you, kialapi.
Eh, eh, releba du di eh, raobona mereko wa government ya re na ra tava. Impana kina le suggestion, Cecile, maybe sito diva ranyana, heri tamodi into. Eh, kina le mono omunge kira tangur, maybe ngao bonsa Minister Rawa Housing. Kauri, baru ahela di into, and then if mutuaseta krei le chalate, why two one two eh, la utuwa usaidlo. Then mutuheba mahela, into ba mahela kaplan ya ha, if government a for room. Whena we le, whena ukono uko keleza two room eh le engue, Cecile hori, resasi ya chalate ya government, kialabo.
Kialabo ha, kapi la mu mutwa nyaka wu tuso, please.
Stress. Ay sa uwa.
Eh, microphone, leka tuso, microphone, kapi la. Tusain ma amase.
Dumela mbatswadi, kialabo ha, vanava kache riti le kamo, rito yu kutwane. Narasokola ba tswadi, ke ko new yes.
Technicians, please, make sure your microphones are working. If there are roving marks, give them roving marks.
Na ki ko new yes stress, eh ya, ya, amaskral. Ba tswadi, ko amaskrala, ne resne mezi, baru lisedi te mezi. Mara, di pompo ta re na dia du. Baru reti di pompo, dia du la kotlase. Hona ya ni pileli michima, arsa kono te na kamo di nklun, repoto noha kaku mraho, michima eh biya le. Ke kivalata ba, ba di kandakati, baru re nar sa wela mraho. Samu ya co officine, oh, buta, ba tuwa ne ba le locala di mita box. Ba tuwa di mita box ofi takwa, baru nta five front. Bianu le po te, ke le mke kulu ya ne ko kaka, five front kavan, five front te ki fuanki mandel, kiahu jeu. And eh, re na ku isress, kiri le, le, eh, kulu, esale ma ngope, aru wulaya, le ma toa, abu thoka, aru veta kampinga pek. Mara retoka le R D P eh one, aru naayo. Bianu, ne ki ba, ba di R D P, ngeba lebele horu kuwa, mo isress wa kili edna. Re koupela di R D P, re na ilu tusakale, dia du la, ma lobamo, ke kari kime li, 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 teleka di koti koti. Di tusarana, ke sa ka, ke na ba bupe, di ba utse na new yes stress, di tusarana, ne li sa mu. Bianu, R D P, R D P, ayit, ba iti te koste wate, re na arindesir. Re luile, re na re luile, ke kiri biya na kisama kadi patla, kama ngope. Ah, kialabo ha, what in to kia koupela wana.
Thank you, Mama, re leboha. Next, that side.
Dumela. Na kifranzi na walo eke tla ko, twendina eh, eh, block N N, so xanguve. Ranavo tata ba ranaki di te. And eh, di te la ta, ranaka mara mo ta, aru tswane le magishen amang. Di CV ki amalo be, na li di te la kamo haru, kwe di, and eh, neru ta maka mo, taka taka ning. And eh, eke lebeleti hapahape, eh, enguen ta te se tansie, ti ona ya title deed. Eh, re kulela hapele kama wone, le rente. And eh, di R D P ta ranadi, te nelimoba ne mbaba sokola, pa populete pulale wenge. Ukere mutwa na le bukoni akere R D P. Heri feza, aru wana ba, ba na, bumohongo basa kera di, ntorre lela kancelar. Raluali di kancelar, ntoar na eh, kasfele li di kancelar. Ba na ba budibu basa iturbona, ba irenka, rba fa di ri pota ba di kisa kolin, ah, lebu. Kwen te weki, mku tusi mo thoku, ki le kuwa plan space, co do officine. Pan teba la oru ki apere bi ampe li, pe le ba trumpa trumpo. Pan teba la, has no nteba la, ampo ta remona re. Mama utro na mo, utro i, i, sesu i peile mo le ba lela muso. Ke ra uwa, ne ki buti sa ura, ki apala open space eh. Nka bereke la na, kauri ki, bereka ka ba na ba ba sokola, le ba na ba di ofene, le ba na ba ilu du kuva di majete. Ke ba kubu kense, ke ba fe dijo. Ar, aru sampa brulela, ke lenkamo abu se pa mpire wenge. So ne kukupela roba te reka, ba tuwa ba reka, kamo do officine, zam, zam muso. Abaskar lela mu apa, ba lebele, le bu thoka ba re. Karu asokola, eh, wana ba lela, oh, oh, ah, di ma di aparo ta mangur, ba konohu trumpa. Sa tle le wenge ilaki apere pila, ki apere seijo. Ukono, ba kononka mo he. Mara, ahu solan se ti di pa mpilar, ki ena me ol. Solan e ba nu, stene se, ba na, akina mo kibereke la mote. Ki no i pe afe, ki apala ili, akitu re ke emi kay. Mara kauri ki atuwaru kancela ra se na kampan stene, ngasulele. Mara ilo mungo thoka tsa luan, ne no kolu le. Ka ba ka tu tuetsa ba ba ngurba, ntusoru leli kancela regrempes te. So na kialabo ha, kikupela ra ba ru tuso, uwa ne rasokon.
Ah, re kure, that side. Thank you. Line ya kamo.
Eh, Tombe. Ki admin George, wabala lamu. Eh, ke tla mo di ke ke, te di ninety-eight, di moa twenty-six. So, na, ne se kisko pelan, ke motelo roho re, ke bereka ka ati, so. Ne kara tahor ba na ba eh, tulue abu runa eh, ba te ba, tebe meroko kuira, kauri. Ke motelo roho re, ki busy, ki irile lechaka ki eh, ki shor la iwa ona. And then ke tseri le profile eh, go tele roho re, eka ira hori, ki kere tehomo ba ne mbaa, muzansi ba kono kara tuso. Se kisko pelan, ne koupela di trata, le mo kibereke la mote. And eh, ke motelo roho re, kinnako mukuku, kina le ba na wabi. Kor lepula inele, kro balaka mara leta, muso mara. Nasen kisko pelan, ne koupela or net, meroko wa ka oh, otla ele, koru otama ele fatululu tle. Le ba na ba muzansi ba kono iti, kialabo.
Thank you very much, uh, but there is this worrying issue. There is no staff at the back. Even now, the chairperson of the A C O P is going to be a staff. It's unfortunate. Where is the secretary, can you please coordinate the staff to do their work? Next line.
Uh Tobela. Oh kesalo mahano, from Lebanon, uh, Wat 12. Uh challenger ona Ernali Onarile, uh, ba hiwa ma wopani. Especially in Wat 12, kesavo lele liwa nona eh, le ona liwa. Uh even le patea bogono with block A, as well as block E, then, uh, erke twaniana kamo, block A W. Ahona di title deed. Mo Wat 12 as a whole. And Alpha Challenge, mo ilorin, hona leba ta dibelorin ba tloka fa la ba xiaba. Ande ba na ba, ibila basa ijuro wetahala because of hona le scam, seselgi sandin. Mo Wat 12. Ne kopa, uh, mea ra wat swan. Elen tate la mu kopa, ah seka seke matapa. Ande ka issue ya mezi. South Africa has been declared a water scarce country. Which means, ahona mezi ayinav, foka supplier everywhere. But, whenever, hovali di initiatives, tedi etan ki di NPOs or community programs, tedi twa anguwahe. Foka protector event mezi, alim kudi noke. Twanee, elen, uh, Department of Nature Conservation. Elero na relevahe, ritinya kela chaleti, revailete merako oh. Ke ka mko narre lele responde, so far, as an organization. Organization era ona gesal she environmental solutions. So Alpha Matapa, ro naranya go tusaholument, foka protector mezi alinte, fe la holumente, yar abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, next line.
Uh, o abolela, ngilo lochavalala from White Eleven. Heli ti hori, ho apply la for RDP. Hona li di requirement to twan, twansingudi reach especially from zero to a seventeen amount. Agi qualify for RDP, agi qualify for grant dual loan. Na neki niya ka spleke, boerka konan hori, ri ka hele di, re na di ntutsari. You go to the site, ke twe, di twareki di kontraga, ba retseta stene, ka sixty thousand rent, asina silo. Of which on that sixty thousand rent, you can build a house. Ka ar qualify for the RDP, ar qualify we akodi banking, foka ra di chaleti. Ner kupela hori, especially Minister Awadinto. Heri yaru apply la, ara apply li di RDP, re apply la di pleke sa oriri na ba re konan, re konui ka hela. Is in the whole social nguvu, ita leka ri, ka ri bond, bond, bond. Because of the bond, opatela bond for twenty years. Why opatela bond for twenty years? It's because of, they two thousand, three thousand runta ewu. Ke katiha ona, ya misavasi. Because of I'm going to pay the bond for twenty years, I cannot take my child to university. Ka five years I can build my own house, kia lebuha.
Kia lebuha, next line.
Can, can Dumelisa ki, uh, vusimbonani waku, watte di five, kodi LKK. Um, the LKK has been there for twenty years, uh, comrade. Uh, the extension said itla, kosocial nguvu, ditla after the LKK. Hona lebele si today, the LKK, hori iemi ko, ko, ko situation ali biang. Ahona di tiila, uh, azanka kaba li di ntutsa RDP, foka li, kodi LKK, ukasakere li nse one ya RDP. Huneli kukuu, annan kodi LKK, hatlokan toileti. Ki kukuu utama ya ka, ka, ka di dondolose tu utoka toileti. Anan tu kukuu hepula ina, kukuuwa ba tu uye ma asaiemi, asarova la kaore, pule ya mnela. So those are the issues serniya kodi hiti hori, uh, di ntutsa kodi LKK, or di, di ntuko di LKK process ya teki kokai. The last thing eki niya koreiza, kitava ya di title deeds. Uh, two, three years ago, nesere ngware sa for the title deeds, and then I re kere response for the title deeds. Leonai it becomes an issue, ya hori, what is happening? The last point, uh, Che, I want to say, uh, people are losing temper. Batuva, ba lusa tepo, mopuso niya rena, because of these things. I will appreciate helu reka kere the responses to deal with these issues, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Dumela.
Dumela. Na ken na Lucas Mountana, eh ko Winterfeld. Ki chairperson ya Winterfeld Community Forum. Re na serelanga so na, hona le kontraga eh, eh akile, ko Winterfeld Phase Two. Ye longhori ya fe la kontraga ewu, and then ba tamaile, ba kwezi di nkolidi di haluse. Ba kwezi li michima ye pilewa ona mola, and then I riturna, kilo fele ta kokai. I rituluana ba no contractor I teengi. Dan ne kupela or, ne refend direction, or di lebiange kolebiana. And then sabu beji, hona le, ba tuva ilorin ki di ho leba re le di application. Di biswa special application ni mara, aru bone bu special lebo kuni. Kaore ta besa leba applya, and then, haba fiu edinto. Sabu raro, ketrawi ra me be rekaka ma rari kri ko pe, ko pressure niya government. Recupela tusu, vetamun.
Thank you very much, kia lebuha. Aru we kamo, ye ki, kwa kwa changa, wa ma felelo, hota atena, mu tushua kala, na kure kere kala. Kamo, the last, the, the, the first row.
Sanbonani, Ninjaani. Uh, ikama, ngu twanis buti, mashangu. Uh, niya playe li inju, yeah special case, jongo mu tu ona bone. Uh, nga chelo kuti inju ya mi, seba yo, yo evaluator, iba, iba ba tupe evaluation. After evaluation, basisa bangtate, jonge na, ku phase two, la ewu Winterfeld. Ngimile ku sekwe na mshaanje, abantu la, since ba ense evaluation, ala ba tu la ba kat bangfona la. Nomangba fona la basa iba ambifoni ya mi, manja ngazu tingyo bo na ngense kanchan. So looka nga thola, idu kaji, disability go two thousand and three, niho la, eh disability grant. Azanga enke ngishale kua mu tu, instead, niya, ni patala eh rent, impilo ya mi, jonge ni patala eh rent. Since two thousand and six, ngthola eh disability grant, ni patala eh rent, angazu niyo patala eh rent ku sekweni. So be ngala kuti ngetek, kuti ngitholi RDP, nabantuana ba ife, ikama, ubuti twanis mashangu.
Thank you very much, next.
Kialu Dumelisa ba duty ba, batwani, kaufela. One li Dumelisa, ke moruti seven seven, James seven seven, mo Wat 12. Mo Wat 12, ke, ke James seven seven, moruti James seven seven, mududu wa mo Wat 12. Ma wopani. Ke the director ya, batwufe, di role. Le, uh, ba, basa ite kanela, momiling, ba, ba leti. Ba elohore, ba tseri ki ma leti, abo HIV and disability and to, kaufel. So, re na le, bo tata bo, bo, bo rolo mo Wat 12. Ke ba, mo, uh, block E W. Block E W, sali i, itoma ho bamu, ka nineteen sixty eight. Of itala leka che no, high na le sentation. Ba duty ba mola ki, ki ba duty ba elohore, ki di ho le, ki, ki, ki disable peoples. And then, kiya disable, ande, ki pleke elohore, enya ka tuso tata. Kia batwufe, leba, leba tuwaba lo la. So, recopa tuso mo tswane.
Thank you very much.
Na koe engue le engue, ahona le tokomelo mola. Ahona li di chaleti, ahona li mezi, ki ma tata fe la. Ahona li title deed, ki sokolo fe la, recopa tuso mo tswane.
Next line.
Uh Dumela. Uh, wabuan ki Joseph Makubela, from Coat Eleven. Uh, na, ke rata ho lebuha, fa puso itile kua no. Uh, ke lebuha la, ka mko, i di, i ri diretsi ngateng. Na re na momi kukuu, re na li, tin tu, re na li mezi, re na li skonti. Mi ra lebuha, hona i ri utwalete puso, ya tla morena, mi fe la waleka na. Hona na koe ri di ti mola, ke mi wa, haru lata seventeen years mola ri di ti mote. Re kamo RDP, re na leba, na ba, na ba ho la. Hona li di ta, te di linteng, te ilongor ba di, ba, ba di ve te, ho re ko tlo tama sport. Meri na ko itu rosporosositlo tama biang. Banke ba refeti la, rosporosositlo tama biang, kaore ba renchi to motilen. Mo ilongor, motilen, ye re lebele te, rosporososotama mote, mo engue ba akile ma tu. Mo engue ki mi kukuu, para mo re na ba rosporositlo tama, na re ba tla, huni tifatsa hori, asporososiyetla na. Engue eh la telan, kia di title deed. Re na li, ba akimoso san nguvu, re na li ba tuva ilonghori, ba rata hona twaneyo yo ote. Motorato na mamilo di, ona amaskralo, ona Winterfeldi, ona li di ntumo ote mu. Mi fe la, uti bella ba tuva ilonghor, ba ba tla di ntuli di title deed. Ahre, retsantse ho registera di title deed, ba ho hela komraho. Hona, haba qualify ho kere di title deed, mi ba tsa rela ba tuva ilonghor, ba tsa tse ba kere di title deed. Nere sepi si to reto kere di title deed, koi di a fitile engi ona, ere sepi si ta ki, ki mea ara. Mea aditi because of, ba tuva ba nga ta, ba ta ba ko tlo applya di title deed te. Recupela hori, na ba re qualifya di title deed te, haba re fe. Ba ilonghor ba na ko, na ko di te kuali kua, ba ba na hori, ba na ba ita bianga, ba na ra di kupela. Uh, ra lebuha, ho re puso ite morin.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, next line. La, line.
Uh, wabolela, mo, ki April mashangu, nguma April mashangu, we extension two, uh, Wat thirty nine. Uh, sipiya kule anda olapa, we nineteen ninety five. Uh, na aksu, angaleso skati, ne toileti ayiko, uh, sisesenda we ni batin kia ka Marias. It's a private sector. Tottenham Shange, siseleenda we ni bezwa, ngokuti, uh, ngomlungu. Manje, asaz, ngokupa tinasia vote, umasi vote, awu si vote, la lo mlungu na. Gwaba lo mlungu, nokba kona kasekwa kule onda. So, ahona toileti, ahona RDP, ahona asina, ona title deed u kule onda. Manja asaz, u kuti si vote, la lo mlungu, gwaba, sisele pe la kule onda, unentrata, si lungi iswa. Sisele pe, sisele na ba ndoba ipo, ba ba ngaboni. Uh, ahona nexti toileti, u kule te onda. Wa fa ku so rich, pe la la, pe ite, ye ba fa ke, ya ma pipe, so rich, lo mlungu. So, umundongana malu kuti, na konu ku, u connecta it toileti. Uh, uko tusa seven zoomkoti na na mshaanje. So, mina benke, u kuti manja ngazu, from nineteen ninety five, Tottenham Shange. Ama RDP ba tuva stolela aba, aba nbatale ma RDP. Ba tinasina next, ahona nextin to enzaga la. Asaz, u kuti manja umbuso, ngabo kuti, si vote, la, um, lo mlungu, obu si vote, leba ni na, kia bo.
Kia lebuha, last line.
Okay, kia lebuha, enzakaensa, samu ashito lo, na ba rangere bayi, tabanga le matwen. Loi angala, ipita Simon Kosa, ma bone, tokula maposhan kerebe mu kua. Se, ndavala la rimle, mngatani twa, inkwen. Eh ba he so. Seges, seges rata usu, sa kese. Ka, uh, uh, RDP. Ba na ba re, na ba sayne se, the subsidy form, last year, kam March. And hona biano. Sete ilo October. Maradi RDP ya hiwa, mara shiba visiu. Sesemakaza, mbaba mbaba ona, ba ba, ba ba sayne se, swaneli RDP se leba, na kana ko ewu. Kabo November, wo December, sesi ba vidisi. Ande sa move, ba sa lemoni, ke ma shiba visiu, kia wizuru wira la ngabon. Ande sabu beji, line ya mo officimo. Ograrero opatela, opati du kana, opati, ma fe la, ogruson opati uerente. Ograr, uh, ke ma festere, I twelve or, or, or ten. Ma ograroba beriksa ma festera, ma bedo la ma ra. Ke bo tata bo na le mona, ya di kuse teleten na le sonas. Ande sesen se, seges niya gomo si, uh, mosomo kanagaso social nguvu, le mosomo holobiana. Hori, utoka, mo repata ba, ba fuwa re na mote. Ka sinu otala, otala kri viati, la mori, ya mori, ya mori di pi. Parega na sa na moro boleka la ba tuwa re na mote. Ritla latalala naayo, ya Winterfeld, uh, oo di, harangua, I ritu ba tuwa na ba patakai. Angali rekrele mpleka, mo ritu ba tso social nguvu, heba tokofesi, ro ba patakoho. Uh, arska ira ordi lo, nir tatafale ba tomudin. Kintwa, kintwa ma tomeginali, eh eh, egelata, egelanga ona tata. Eh, saboraro, kila kiloko te di tri, what di tri? Eh, mo what di tri na lebo tata. Cancela rare na, di what committee, ba tuwaha ba kopani. Eh, heba sa kopani, kotlasa kwa sa faraba haki ba tomudin. Ogram, cancela rabi di sem, abi di sem meeting, here ya eh, umulela kari portfolio so so kese. Agazi di kono di swara di portfolio so so kese. Eh, what committee di diketi, eh, what committee kri di se temo. Kuro wa bonza ba tuwa ba ba berikisa. Kia lebo?
Raleboha, eh, ya loki na kuya, mushumi shanuaka, my colleague to take over. I just want to emphasize one thing. There, you'll be number one because he's going to chair seated. That group there at the beginning will be number one. You are still number two, number three, number four, number five. Ha levi chakari no more. Please, le- le- le la telatwe, alavi chankagon. Eh, ro kupa la kuru, komrao, riskari ralishad. Meeting wa important for the nyakajaleda, please, don't make noise. This is your opportunity to use it. Thank you.
Eh, kia leboha, eh, program director. Eh, kubulotsu di khangse diinchi. Eh, ki- ki- I've noted that dabaya RTP housing, dababa, tavo infrastructure eh, water. They've been already said o- over a number of times. So, ne kitokopa ore, ribulele, kia utwa hal?
Oh, no utwa.
Okay, no, ere kitla buelakodi mo. Ne kiri, ne ki- neke, neke kitokopa ore, me ma kutwa ane. Riska repeat the same issues over and over again if we can. So, retlakopa eh, line number one, itlalatelwa ki line number two, three, four, five eh, kali nan eoleu. Akibonipila, kinta te kamopila, mo line number one, is it, eh, me? Oh, okay, hunali ba ilunguri, ki line number one, ki banti on the extreme eh, right? Na re kitokopa ore eh, babue, then refer line number two, three, four, five kabuchan.
Dumela?
Ay.
Samoasutoma kitwa ko, harangua ko zone one. Renale sentara ya ba tuwa ba disabled. Mara hoga bo na kore tse na ngote, ngoto mula pe ilu. Reposa kuri, are ma Africa boruare, votar, votela puso ya ro. Morinze moteng relevanele schoolo kasi diiri, ridililele di kopa se di msi tada, harikri di karao. Retlo kopa morahore teretele officer antate ra mukoba, kubona kuri, leru narvatu. Asorharali disabled tuwa hulu, ha- ha- harina tiro. And then, kina kana hore, harali ba tuwa ba disabled. Horre boleleli puso, retshantse re ne reli, reli mo. So, kupoya me kieu ba hulu, harina mori na moteng, kia lebo?
Okay, raleboha, la- line number two?
Dumela?
Eh.
Dina ki Michael Kua teko what thirteen? Eh, ki diulako Swain Village. Renalebo tata ba, the- the so-called ma- land mafias. Ba tuwate pa le- lefazi, kura arthalo hanyor lefazi kela maspala or kela batu. The place has been approved for RDPs ni- ni kolu. Ba tuwate, ba sensei ba tse lefazi leu, haritso kuri hetsa halang ka deland mafias and ni- the government eh arena. Ka hori busy, repromisa ba tuwa ba bota kuri, lefazi lela ba se kaba namolona because it's going to be illegal. Ba tuwate, sensei ba tse lefazi leu, shor- ba tla, detla ritu kuri, le refelo na, le refeyona kuri. Huiraha langa that place because hona vya norfitu le ba tuwa laring remaga, mo the communities. Please, narokopa hori at least literally refer to- to- to that point, kia lebo?
Raleboha, line number three?
Eh, dumela, muzala ke Donald Wing, kila kiloko hot seventy-four, hamaskral. Eh, renali challenge obolumu country arena. Eh, challenger na kore ba tu, ba ilunguva abasnang magu. Banalu wipia mo di plake ente longuva, dinalidi, dinalimetu edi. Or ki di plake ente longuva, ki di mo di flight lining. And then I have a government eh, re reporter la di lota challenge so so. Aba- abarisponde kana. And then oruwa levela, ona va non like, ona va nuke sama so. Otoka bo na di- di Manchester di to one thing because of, ba tuwate mo di plake. Bantemo di plake ente longuva, dinali, dinali meti, meti amanchi. And abakono ho, mevo lo yo tama ya mo di talent about. The other thing, eh longuva, eh la muihe to mo country arena go. Eh, country arena hunali di lota di ente, ente di duela ngus. Like, ba tuwano nina fe la, abapreciate horo, tshantse hondel plake ente longuva, ki bo economical activities. And for recreational facilities. Di otse diya taha la mo- 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 community arena, na lu di reporter. Amsho kina le close to twelve years ki, ki ndantiga wa la di leta, ki di sakopa la maintain. Le mo kuru mine, ma di respondu zaten wa di wa na kuri, wa- wa shoteni wa. Or haritso me wa kati wa, osa, osa wulele lota tshantse bal. Ba tuwano ni na fe la, abapreciate horo, tshantse hondel plake ente longuva, ki bo economical activities. And for recreational facilities. Di otse diya taha la mo- 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 community arena, na lu di reporter. Amsho kina le close to twelve years ki, ki ndantiga wa la di leta, ki di sakopa la maintain. Le mo kuru mine, ma di respondu zaten wa di wa na kuri, wa- wa shoteni wa. Or haritso me wa kati wa, osa, osa wulele lota tshantse bal. Ba tuwano ni na fe la, abapreciate horo, tshantse hondel plake ente longuva, ki bo economical activities.
Oh, kirile po sobaki line number three. Line number three will be followed by number four. Ari benkwa ripane, yes, line number three? Buwa ba?
Eh, sanbonani?
Eh.
Eh, upenminisilo kulmago, ngala ema eli, la isasha nguvu. Eh, ngneskalo la pa, ngletiskalosami, ngendaba ya renti. Eh, ngimute, ngohala ipenchele. Eh, i renti ami le nyanga le, iti eight hundred. Manja benkwa zobusa, ngiti, ngile officeini ngayo kulmanabo, kuti, ngabanjani, ngoban ngolumde. Ni patali ka ngani ka ngani le mali, ngwa zukthola imali ogu. Ngpatali society nganabantuana. Ma ngopki pi eight hundred, ngpatali renti foringwe RTP, aban banabamaze ni, ngopatala ngani society ami. Benkela kutu, umbuso usine, kona manje, bankime lo mlilo, ekaya, ngbasan ngunin apani.
Okay, ra- re- raleboha, harife ngo line number five munyetla, number four? Ya konfusiu.
Kia leboha, na ki Patrick Mawwani. Ba tataka kia ma bedi, ba tatawa ka ba ma tomoke ma bita. Ma bita, aga, aguanka ona, kia wuntatemoholo, ago pretoria. Kotropo me, havi anungha ten, haritso re maspala wa pretoria, otutile ma bita, ho, wuntatemoholo, wa isise koka. Re kwaletse maspala ma kwaala manji, maspala hara rabi. Ko tatawa we ve di, morafiwa esoho otlo hago pretoria. Otama ya uilo ko otromilo ngote. Hunali ko tata ona vya anungba dispute ya bo hoshi. Bo hoshi wo, re kwaletse puso hanchi ra ngala la, ntabo commission. Ntabo commission na la bo fe lo eh, releyare, ba fe di se, ho, bo la la ka dispute ya bo hoshi ka nineteen twenty-seven. Narokopa ru puso ri tusen, eh, tae tusemo dispute ye ya bo hoshi ye, kuri, ah, he diro diira hezi, ntabo commission de sa kola diira. Commissione li ndeng havi anung, eh, re ona, ha ekono ho, tse na monklenye ka kuri, hunali cut off date. Ya ma ba pili, bo hoshi wo ho, kia lebo?
Rale. Harwe lenko line number one? Line number one? Hosi na pullelori tla we akuna line number two? Line number two?
Eh, xutso, parliament ka butlalu?
Li kabuwa?
Parliament ka butlalu, let's chava ka butlalu. Li inaki heri, bogota makuve. Akina, akina complainte ekalo, ma ba pili na. Ekiling complainte kina lenyana ki, ekonsenang eh, muakisa nuaka, oasato kume luin. Hona vya no, hunali wa tata ba ma bone, lipio pi. Ki le crosspondence li muso ma ba ka amanga ta. Fela, karabo hai itli, sete li ndeng he itla, hai wuzurire in. Se kinya kongosi, tu kuri kina li, bukma ngwalo, li crosspondence, ekina lingbu tlasu ba ya ona, ilin bow. Bow kitomi li ngofa, sikala tella, sete ekshantse ki ireli, bo na katayi. Yene wa tatawa ka ki ba kenla kuri, herinwa la ba vereki ba muso ma rifi. Ringwa la hosensu bu rifi, kapar ingwa la ramu kupa bu rifi. Kapar ingwa la omongu omongu bu rifi, kupa la ra bu rifi wo, bu fitladi atenza are rabe. Ki wulela ma ba pili ba saditata, karu le ya ba sadi, ba ba sa ruteha. Akibuleleli ba sadi ba ba ruteli. Ki wulela, kumsadi wa ruteheli, ngotla inyake la loya ra oluxamulat. Fela mutuasa ruteha, ili musadi, asina muna, atoka mo tlo kometi, muso uri inka eh. Awitshantse kuri, kera awitshantse kubele di rights. Di rightsi tse diskeri ya mo ama enana, kera shileki muna, ili musadi, li- liwa na, ah, hurisawa na ali mungu. Ah, muso kere, kupa la tuso.
Raleboha.
Muso kosa, mo kere tuso ya hai, ah, uritzi wisi, kuri, ki- bu tataki.
Okay.
Ki se kila kaso naseu.
Ri se ripenja.
Kina li crosscondense li.
Ne ru, ariska tlapanwa cho hori tiana ko line number three?
Eh, kina.
Li kabuwa? Eh.
Kina, retinechi, wako region two. Wa emete muka towa majamo, S C P, South African Communist Party. Ntwere langa ona kore region two hamaskral, re la ga sanitization. Di toilette za upula tshana lo kobo mamilo di libo atrendzi. Eh, ya bo ve di, ya ba vita muriki tu matters of matter. Eh, ki infrastructure meti a controller, atwan, motilen ba vita ba kia unexpected hazard. That is a infrastructure. Hotuakan nineteen ninety-four, retite di lena shebi. Mo ilunguva, baba mbaba tokofesi ka diploma, docreti, masters, asba kri mereko. Rata ori puso ya bo harin, lia province la nationali. Eh, meholi koni September Minister of Housing and Settlemente, li na panela province li hosensu ramu kupa. Libereke hintenentla, vletense commissione ka mu hari, konya kisa ma nyofo, stofo alinteng. Kibala jalaro maspala warona, dele championi, kana koya rakadi eh, gwen ramu kupa. Maspala warona ananu, kabotla swanekarapiane eh, linteng around the city. Eh, o fe iti, oditi, kupa la kuri eh, barixstructure ma spala warona. Ba sensei ba tuwa ruteli, ba na le capacity properly education in maspala or. Maspala rena okono manjuwa, okono ilia sustainable of roots, inwa city of twan, thank you.
Okay, raleboha, harie ngo rudukule di tchata haosepe di harie eh, line number four? Ahuna, alina pullelori maika ibereki?
Ya bereka.
Okay, harie ngo line number five, technicians, please sort out number four.
Yeah, seven.
Line number five, li kabuwa, limo wa onamulo.
Bar ya seven zamana.
Ay, ay bereki, sete isebeta. Okay, iti ya he line number four, uka buwa.
Let all the people who love the people and the country now says, here is the freedom. We'll fight side for side through our lives until we won our liberation. Thank you very much, kia leboha, parliament itile mo hari kache gu, sellosaka sisiva ha hesu. Lele parliament, artswalene di bordera tare na, di bordera tare nadi anela. We should close our borders.
Matoho, kri kopa ru muwela, arutwe heli bedha matoh, fe zantate?
We- we- we should close our borders because of the bordera tare nadi anela. Eh, to do, oh, to you Minister of Human Settlement. The houses that you are allocating, thinking you are allocating for the South Africans. You are not allocating for the South Africans. Those houses, hunna the foreigners in those house.
Matoho, haridanako ba hai tu, fe le zantate?
Let me continue by saying, let all the people who love the people and the country now says. We'll fight until we win our liberation. I still continue by saying eh, to you Minister of Human Settlement, please, to along the bordera, dokono allocatea. Le we ngahbe, le retelen ba thwailunguri, we know that they are remain, they are not remaining here. Le ba wuze them back to their countries before the election.
Thank you very much, thank you. Eh, mati, aritso.
Before the election, we want to see those people be devoted. Come back to where they come from.
Ri hutwile abuti, kri kopa line number five? Na, harina naako, harina naako ba hai tu, na kwa isedi ile, ru hutwile entate? Ru hutwile.
Yes, please, please fellow South Africans, let's talk.
Aritshampaning, aritshampaning, refer na line number five, ikhalaiemi, ri hutwile point ya ha, uyadi foreign nationals.
Here to dictate me when I'm supposed to talk. Allow me to talk because of you are coming here to us.
Raleboha.
You have said to us, you are coming here to us.
Ra- number five iliana, obatla uguwa? Ru hutwile. Ubuletika di foreign nationals, eh, raleboha, input ya ha o.
The terrorism are running this country. These people who are calling them the foreigners are not the foreigners, are the terrorism. Because of are not here permanently and we don't know them, those people, they don't understand.
Raleboha, harie ngo number five?
Yeah, thank you, Mpatushelo. Eh, siyakwona Mpatushelo.
Number five?
Kya kopa?
Harie ngo line number five?
Eh, Mpatushelo, lokulmago David Wagaslulu emane lo di.
Sikela kutu la silalelu baba, na ibega lalele, sikela simlalele, sikela gumlalele.
Ogokala, sikela Mpatushelo, osnigeze iskati, sikulumo ognga parati. Wa ba asikuema parliament, ni segiti, please, ni ngasstopi sikulumo. All right, ogos, all right, ogokala, niya ma regulator omteto we country. Eh, intuwa ngulu, oguti intuas mangasago, kule mi tetu ni ibega ago. You are too lean, especially uma figa enda we ni setzindu. Umundu uya sevenza utata ipont, uya hamba umsevenzu ya pele. Uma upele, those banks, abate tama pont uguwo, ba kipala ba intuas indi. And then guna in gana, guna yongi into, umtetu okona aolandelo, ba eh, ni regulator imeteto. Sikela kutu kona manje, ni nigazela ma banka ma machinoda. Ngoba si tikpele, esisotola ma RTP. Gunabantuwa ba sevenzago, egmele ba tate ama pont, bangaki shua eh, zindini, uma umsevenzu pelile. There must be an alternative eh, kuti kwenza galat, es ipailo ikulumo. Ogoswili, mi nenenda we nlangxala kona. Zotela kutu babungo nyama spona neka kulu. Gunazinduze PHP, esakiwe, lavoba antu ba telepaga tuwa lezo zindu. Abasai langa next, zakiwe nje ngomkuku. Abanama file, eminitoria yo kuti, uma ngenseka kuvu nen national disaster. Umbuso, uguwa su kuba kela lezo zindu. Sikela kuti, ogamange, zisnige zinkina, uma infula zin range. Abantu si kokotelo ba yasfo ne la nasepso. But ina zile zindu zo umbuso we nu, zia vusa. Manje, sensei nje, nikela kuti, lezinduze PHP, zia hamba, ziolungiswa. And then lavoba intu zobona kuti, zisestanda tinesi nje. And then ogoswili futi?
Baba? Utze ogoswili?
All right.
Sixwile, manje, kuka na banya naboba mile.
Eh, Mpatushelo, utisesis okulumo, nikela snige ziskati sikulumo. Lasisala kona, abantu, abanya bana ma title di di, abanya abanao. Sikela kuti lungiswe le yon, and futi eh, ufawe tota tu okulumo, abantu ba puma ngapancha. Ya bo sikela kuti nibalu misela, ngoba kona manje, eh, sinekina, imi kwakoyetu, ingolile ngala bantu. Sikela kutu uma, nenza intole iplan, yogo- yowaka izindu. Again, zameni na ma small industries.
Okay.
So that small business people, bangena kula ma small industries, bangazon golisi itrata zetu. Wa ba la eh itratin zetu. Exe, nukuna bantawa, kivele exe, amatekse exenengabo three, four. Baba ju nguunzi, awo mama ba tatalwa ma bags.
Siyaku.
And then manje, i problem yetu umparati.
Okay, baba, ngizokela ngo, ngenshonipo. Abakona na baba funu graza ma point, masiba apena i opportunity. Nikela sikwele ngo line number one, let's be mindful of time. Sishilu maskala kutu only have one hour, already sesi, julei hourile tu ne eight minutes. So, ngizokela lo kuti snige, let's give each other a chance, katrompo. Line number one? Nan, line number two? Line number three? Hosi?
Number two, yeah, isha. Sanbonani?
Yebo.
Minanu li ndimkuwa nazi, ni applye li RTP o two thousand and one. So, since umeli RTP for twelve years, last week inha benkwa yecheki RTP, RTP i kona. Bati angsa qualify kuti ngitole, ngena more than three point five. So, kuti, injula i three point five kaniwa ne imali, ba tfa ne ye benge, applye li injule low. And then, esin sevenzum sevenzi, ona si wa ka government. Nfira kuti ang qualify, u applyela injule pont. So, mnangfuwazi, es inju ipume neka malami, yopiwa ba ni. Ngoba ngimele for twelve years. Ni applyele, ni ena i afi esala, le ni ena manje. Es umu mama umtana, umtano nganakaya, umeli RTP for twelve years, konmanjono kuti angsa qualify kuti ngitole. Nyatala cancela i, benkwa ne rizole, nikela ubegimi, nyaini dalen jule yo, akuna kuti nzo tini.
Okay.
Intuwa lasstuke nguche la yon na, ba ti angsa qualify, for twelve years, umeli intobacha ta osa qualify. Yopiwa ba ni.
Six.
Nyaitrela ya.
Okay, sixwile mama, sixwile, baz opendula, marabas niggege unamba, line number three, na ye gala funu kuluma. Kuluma li line number three? na ye gala funu kuluma, kuluma line number three?
Nake tlakelu ko otetinai. Ko otetinai neridivatule, ridivatato bata, really, really ana we. Kor kodi, kunalis kontiri, hu ya kotlas, arifus kontiri, di RTP kodi mu bafile, di toiletetza di asbestos, hefika kotlasera ahela, toiletetza renaho kadibona. Kor lola kama haru upela uchilo, kodi mu di kerekhi. And then, when number three yani, kilaka, di unititza lo nata maboni. Akitsura akopila orra, rewala kodi pramastofa le mulo. Because unititza lo nata maboni, lidifukudi se tata. Ki, akitla kwa tatavumo, di boxing orwea marle horre eka, lidifukudi se di unititza lo nata maboni ta.
Okay, raleboha. Renali announcement before is ya line number four. Kitokupa che personai ra announcement, immediately after that, return amo number four and number five.
Viva parliamentary, viva. Viva parliamentary, viva. Viva insuopi, viva. I request your attention. Honale, omoware na utimeli che beke. E black and white. Please, ya ka ikira, kamona ma ki. Ya e hwecha ngai kisefapiri. Black and white bag, please you must bring it here. Eh, the other announcement will do, will do it when we finish. But now, I just want to kilebo general public hori. Public hearing here, I feel another no. It's all gonna be after two. But because time, evo tokwa, lesangile je, you must eat. Again. Good, reglou du melala, panels, barisponde, la we are happy. It's gonna be la wle. Honamele reglou du melala eh, modula stula zoro umo. Otakiya, don't know what a kela inama fela lo oru fidi. Komka panela ito lebe, itisponde there, after, after two we go on.
Okay, eh, ruutwile announcement, eh, line number four.
Sanbonani, sanbonani, umeri slota lokulumayo, wasesusha anguve, word thirty seven, extension thirteen. Nengiina ngijwe RTP. Injue RTP ngene kwe ngo twenty ten, eguvule ngo mama firstel, ngatota ma ginera wa sebenzi. Naninto zokopa assebenzi. Gansalo ke, utela, ukkeke gile nyageye, ngaku xabala la izinzu, ze RTP za se tuduz. Wakkeke kama tiles. So lenzu i aneta, uma ivungvungu zupaga, paga misinsa angsa sheti ofa oyowazi. Aguna ntabati la guma ribs, waba leon ntabata zange je isanga nisenu simende. Gantige anyito guna ma kuma, kulelo jaliti lama. Lenzu ngayi fany sango nineteen ninety six, kodwa waba intu asilandelewa, yatene iswa lonzu. Wakuyinzu engulu eh uguin. So lenzu inamachi, stand samso kala sanga nineteen ninety six, asina wa machi. Nketla omachi asu. Eh uguinileli, leli kona, gunes, guna machi ama kulu. Peskola omachi, kpegue amachi ama nyama kulu, gunesinyoka, sibulale sinyoka mila namalang. Kulumen agia usisise. Gantige, singa ma pensioners, kyangmanga zutu waszulu natal. Yinda ba abantu abama pensioners, banige zoma food passes, tina asnigezu. Gantige lenda westana ku extension thirteen. Gunabantu abakwalile, abaha ba ngene ngodwa ne itule isho vayu. Asina zinzeli, fulama ina, gunota. Si, si potale kilu sitwalisidum, wifula nainil. Se zisaskontiri, ngobis motaswa zukene, gansalo nes gulane. Sen ngatima itina, angase zenjan, sitele shatin. Kulumen agia usinakegen, usisise, estale zinzi, ne ishaka lipi. Es ngaborregi, isitini, tini zakona sia borek, unga sequenzikan, sisise.
Siyabongama mama, masiege gu line number five, besesizoba ne announcement yo yokwina. Ezo affecti program, line na, line number five.
Mena ma esu.
That's five.
Ya lume sabaswa.
Ni kabulela?
Ya lume sabaswa. Eh, esee, renale selomo, kidu, kennamo dupe, rennamo chaza angube. Moi GG. Log GG and FF. Sekeni modi intu nitudeu, kutuwa kisa pondoka ninety nine, takana kamo. Hadina mulo, hadina mesi, hadina, hadia chupelwa, hadina itwela. Helle help abota ba after three months, taberite, ba ilefu kutu, abewutu kela chabar zama rawu orno. Halike yeze, sekene yeze, dinudeu elektrisi, di di kable regilema boxeraregile, kacha utuwa retwamo dinudeu. Intu elekshua ya moto asa is. Ono wana wena, kalipambiri vitari chenchaa, kutu asa bizagawa na bizagamthomo. Nan tuya pondwa iteng, es nan twela, es nan mesi, es nan selo kama ha. Kialebo.
Okay, riutwile, reglou, hutlaba na li announcement etlo iruwang. Before eh, etla affectang program ya renaha nyani. Coach, otlai presenter, he rudu melana kayona, reklabe rudu melani kayo.
Kada boha. Eh, hutlaba le changes anyan. Program ya renai klo, tona pele, habeka two o'clock. And the same question, same department, same challenges. Re kupa la gur, re hona yala regasi, fair panel, hori ife tole. Kabaga la uru tona pele. But I feel to la late after, after. Hona yala, reglou kupa la, all of you. Horu obzemen na garna ku ife dile, kenya. Helle itoah. Eh, but you will be given, mil votes. Kualu zena wongo, batala faritikita riyo. Kualu zena wongo. Kolo hona wajapati kta, kupa la wa official. Official at announce, lechaka yuang leyuang. All right, two o'clock, you must be seated. Retlo tona pele, kachonari line ito na je. Two o'clock ria boya. And here we amo, hutlaba ucheraba ma weh, the same thing. Hutlaba ucheraba honorable nube and colleague. Thank you very much. Kilebo galale, my colleague, honorable Tawba for sharing well, thank you.